Counselors, to your seats, please. Counselors, to your seats. Counselors, are you ready? We'd like to open the meeting. Good evening, Madam Clerk. Would I ask you to take the roll call, please?
Counselors, Bead and Bender, here. Crocker.
Here.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Flores.
Here.
Rap Grissette.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levek.
Present.
Neary.
Schnep.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley. Wallace.
Here.
We have 12.
Thank you. Having a quorum established, I'd like to make an announcement. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known to me at this time. Please show the record that no one is recording. Thank you very much. I'd ask you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With the council's permission, with the council's permission, I'd like to take out of order a presentation on the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan update, which may assist us with a question shortly thereafter. Hearing no disagreement, I would ask Dan Santos to please come forward. Dan Santos is the professional engineer and the director of our Department of Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Town Council. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. I'm pleased to be able to be here this evening and share with you our most recent monthly update on the wastewater planning effort in the town of Barnstable. So we usually start with this slide, just to show since 2015, when the Water Resources Advisory Committee started meeting, through today, all the tasks that have been either undertaken or underway. And you can see at the bottom of the slide that we are very close to completion of the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, which is due ultimately to the Cape Cod Commission for review, but finally to the Department of Environmental Protection. And our plan is to have that to them by the end of the year. Well, the last slide was the timeline, basically just showing what I just said, but I think the most important aspect is what we've been doing since June. So significantly, the plan, which was earlier in this year, and the draft plan that was presented to you, was a three-phase, 60-year plan, three 20-year phases. We've been working very closely with leadership and the Town Manager's Office for the past several months, very closely, weekly, and our staff is fully engaged in working on this. And the plan, as you can see, has been shortened to three 10-year phases, with the first phase, about 45% of the total plan is in the first phase. That Phase 1 was expanded to accommodate additional portions of Lake Wauquott, and that was along Great Marsh Road, along Finney's Lane, Huckins Neck Road, and ultimately on the west side, Shoot Flying Hill Road. In the, for the CDMP development, we're continuing to write the report. Seven of the eight sections have been drafted. And the finance plan that was produced by Finance Director Milne is submitted, is under review. It's being modified as we tend to tweak the plan, which we have been doing. So every time we make some changes, we have to modify that financial plan. Modeling, which I think I've expressed in the past, is a very important aspect of this. Ultimately, the goal of the plan is to meet total maximum daily loads of nutrients or nitrogen in the estuaries on the south coast. So the way to do that, we have to make sure our plan is going to do it, so we have to prove it out with modeling, which is done by UMass Dartmouth School for Marine Science and Technology. That work is underway, and we expect that by the end of this month. So that's a very important aspect, to prove out our plan, which the regulators will be looking to make sure it does. We continued our public outreach. We spoke to the Centerville Village Association, the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition Annual Meeting, Clean Water Wednesday at Cape Cod Beer, and the One Cape Summit, where we've been talking to as many people that want to hear us and as many people invite us to share what our plans and projects are. And I think it's important, and you'll see, that it's not just planning, and we're not just writing a comprehensive wastewater management plan, we're proceeding with implementation of that plan, to the tune of, so far, 15 projects in the last two years, that you've appropriated money for $22.5 million. And after tonight, that would be over $24 million if those projects are approved. Strawberry Hill Road Expansion, this is the sewer expansion from Cobles Beach through Finney's Lane, and that's the result of expediting that project to take advantage of the situation where Vineyard Wind will be in that road, putting in electrical duck bank. So we want to take advantage of that and do all our utility work at the same time. That saves us money, saves headache, gets all those roads repaved at their cost and not ours. We have effluent disposal study underway. As I've spoken to you in the past, effluent disposal is a critical part of our plan, is what to do with the wastewater after we treat it. Good portion of our town is in zones of contribution or zones that are supplying water to our public water supply wells, so it's very difficult to locate large areas where we can put effluent in the town of Barnstable. So that's caused us to look to our east and west. And one of those is Route 28 Yarmouth Road intersection. The state this fall is awarding a contract to major reconstruct that intersection, that Willow Street-Yarmouth Road and Route 28. And as part of that, which you'll be taking up later tonight, we're proposing to put sewer pipes, four sewer pipes, under that intersection that would facilitate our relationship with the town of Yarmouth, because we've done a study with them, where they've come to us and said, "We could use wastewater treatment," and we've said to them, "We could use effluent disposal." So we're in conversation about accommodating their treatment, which we can do if we can have disposal areas in Yarmouth. So this really facilitates moving ahead with that. The dredging here, Sampson's Island dredging. The county has committed to doing it this fall. There was some question, because they had a lot of issues with their dredges over the last year, and they seem to have gotten that straightened out. And some communities did not get their dredging done, but they have committed, in fact, today we met with them, they have committed to starting that dredging on October 16th. Unfortunately, we didn't get the state grant like we did last year, but you all appropriated funds to do the dredging, and we'll be using that funding. And we will reapply for grant for Phase 3. Finally, Mill Pond, this is in Marson's Mills at the intersection of Route 149 and 28, where we have proposed dredging that pond to be able to treat for nitrogen, which is not doing very well any longer, because the pond is silted in from about eight feet depth to less than a foot depth. Dredging that pond will allow that, allow it to accommodate treatment of nitrogen. So the last piece of that really is, and we always knew it was going to be a significant permitting issue, and the reason is there's an endangered species or a threatened species in that pond. It's a little minnow called a bridal shiner, and we have to mitigate any impacts on that. So we're in discussions with the Mass Natural Heritage Program, which is responsible for that program, and those talks continue, and we're optimistic that we will be able to get through that. I mentioned looking to the east and west for effluent disposal. On the east, Yarmouth, and on the west, Joint Base Cape Cod, we have submitted a letter of intent to the Air National Guard in Washington, who owns and operates that facility's systems, and they have invited us to submit a final proposal or a formal proposal, which is due September 30th. We, there are two entities that have invited, that have been invited to submit a proposal. One is a private entity, and the other is the town of Barnstable. And we have put together a team in town, including consultants as well, and we're going to be working on that proposal over the next several weeks and get that in in time. The ultimate benefit of the JBCC option is really the effluent disposal. They have 15, 22,000 acres in total, 15,000 acres of land in the north, where they currently do wastewater effluent disposal from their existing plant, and there's no threatened resources like we have here in the middle of Barnstable. And the other opportunity is they have a wastewater treatment plant, which has capacity, which could be expanded. We are in continuous talks with Falmouth, Bourne, Mashpee, and Sandwich, the surrounding towns. We want to, we want to have this be a regional solution. We're proposing that we manage and run it. We have the experience and the capability to do that. The other towns, at this point, we would, it remains to be seen what their relationship would be, but they are very interested. You know, at least Sandwich and Mashpee have reached out and expressed very much an interest in participating in that opportunity. I think we need some batteries on this thing. So this is the latest phase diagram of the wastewater plant for the sewer expansion. And if you recall this graphic from previous presentations, the red being Phase 1, the green being Phase 2, and the yellow is Phase 3. Our plan ultimately, by funding and putting in alternatives now, like the Mill Pond dredging, and looking at aquaculture, and turning bogs into wetlands, and alternative septic systems, our goal is that we can lop off portions of, or perhaps even that whole Phase 3, which is a significant amount of cost in wastewater. And, but we want to prove out those technologies and get the credit, because we've shown that they work. Many other towns have put in these alternatives without any knowledge that they're going to work, and they're trying to get through DEP to get credit for something that hasn't been proven out. We didn't think that was a prudent way to go. And then what I wanted to show, and I mentioned a moment ago. So this is Phase 1. This was the red you saw in the last, and the dark red, or the salmon, I guess, is projects that you have funded, that we have underway and are active. And this is the Finney's Lane Sewer Expansion, the Long Pond Sewer Expansion, the Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion, the Addicts Lane Pump Station, an expansion to accommodate economic growth, and along that corridor by the new Cape Cod 5, the Marson's Mills School Transformation, from a wastewater treatment plant to a pump station. And again, this is about $22.5 million of work that's in progress, in design, and in fact, with the Strawberry Hill Road project from Cobles Beach, we have construction funds that you approved last month. I think that's my last slide, anyway. So with that, I will entertain any questions you may have or comments.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions from? Jim, do you want to take questions, or do you want to wave a public comment? What we know is the internet is a very effective tool in getting us out there, but it's also a tool that doesn't always bring the true story to light. What we have here is a very honorable guy, a professional engineer, and someone who has a clear understanding of where we're headed in sewer. So I rearranged the schedule with the intent of asking Dan to go next door in the Selectmen's Conference Room to answer any more direct questions that anybody may have in the crowd regarding Wauquott Lake area or any other aspect of the sewer, why we do some other light business here, that's very important business. And then everyone's welcome to come back and speak under the public comment. When we speak under public comment, there is a rule in our chamber that if an item is on the agenda, you must wait until the agenda item comes up. There is no agenda item for Wauquott Lake. So after we go back into public comment, anybody interested in speaking on Wauquott Lake can come forward and speak. But this is an opportunity to talk to the real guy, the guy with the answers, and we're also fortunate enough, our managers agreed to go in the room with them. So if you have any questions at this time, this would be the opportunity for you to get some straight answers. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Please feel free, she prepared the room next door for you, and Mark is going to join you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody would like to exit into the room for a moment and talk directly with them, please feel free. We're trying to make this option available to you, so you can get the answers you're looking for. We're not going to deal with guesswork or misinformation. We're trying to get right to the basis of the issues for you. We'll take a short recess while we have one-minute recess, while we clear the room. Okay. I need your attention, please. We have to get back to the business of the day, if I may. Thank you. I've had the good faith and happenstance to work on several committees in town, and there's a couple that's a dynamic duel that always comes to light and comes to mind when I think of advocates and people who know how to speak directly to the issue. And at this time, I would like to acknowledge Ralph and Deb Crowe, and ask them to come forward. And I would ask my fellow counsel, Jen Cullum, to come out front and please work with them on a long-due proclamation.
Hey.
How are you?
Better than I have been in a while.
Excellent, I'm happy to hear that. Well, I'm here tonight to give some overdue consideration and appreciation publicly to Deb and Ralph Crowe for their unending commitment to this town. It spans, geez, since 2003, and I just think that, since I've been a town councillor, there's been no straighter arrow than Deb Crowe. She says the tough things when the tough things need to be said. Ralph has been steady by her side, and I'd like to read some of the things that they've done. There were so many, by the way, that we couldn't search the internet, we broke it. So I asked Deb if she could pen the things that they had done. So this is the two pages of things that they have offered us since 2003. And I think that's, is that a grandchild of yours over there?
Number one.
Excellent, I love it.
Why don't you invite them up, Jen?
Yeah, come on up, everybody.
Let's meet their family. Come on up, please. Join your family.
Now she's happy. We're making volunteers here. I think we probably do somewhere. So anyway, this is, so, and can I ask your names?
I'm Jen, this is Aubrey.
I'm Ralph.
Hi, nice, welcome, welcome. You must be very proud of your parents, in-laws. So I'm going to read what Deb wrote, and then I'm going to say a little word. So Deb and Ralph bought their first house in Hyannis in 1979 from, or for Ralph's parents or from, for? For Ralph's parents. They moved it, moved to it in 2003, when Deb retired from Jefferson Health System in Philadelphia, and Ralph retired from First Penn Bank. Deb and Ralph have served on many groups together. First is the Hyannis Civic Association from 2003 to present. Deb has served as Executive Secretary, Treasurer, Vice President, and President since 2016. She's the current president of that. Ralph has been the Executive Secretary since 2006. Voices of the Village Steering Committee, which Deb chaired, and Ralph was the liaison to the Neighbor-to-Neighbor Subcommittee, which resulted in major changes to Hyannis, major changes. Hyannis Fourth of July Parade Town Committee, creating a Decorate Your Bike Contest, run by the Hyannis, Greater Hyannis Civic Association, and the Coordinator of Volunteers 2014. The Hyannis Christmas Stroll Harbor-ing Lighting Program. Deb chaired it for six years, and Ralph was the liaison to the town. Hyannis Open Streets, where Deb is co-chair and Ralph is the liaison to the town. Barnstable Newcomers Club, where Ralph ran many of the social programs, and Deb served as Secretary, first Vice President, and then President in 2005. They both attended the Inside Town of Barnstable Government Classes. Cape Cod Maritime Museum, volunteer coordinators for the Cape Cod Maritime Museum Festival and its fundraisers. First Lutheran Church, West Barnstable, ran the new member program, 2004 to 2010. Habitat for Humanity, Ralph was fundraising, Deb was on the build team for projects in Hyannis. Greater Hyannis Civic Association Award, JFK Junior Community Service Award in 2016. Rotary International, I'm halfway through. Ralph has served on CFAC, where he's been liaison to the Roads Committee and to the Water Resources Advisory Committee, and CFAC is a very important committee, because it's the citizen's eye on our spending, on our budgets. These people are very committed to this town. Barnstable Association of Recreational Shellfishing, Board Assistant Secretary and Scholarship Chair, this is all Ralph. Osterville Men's Club, Board Member, Executive Secretary and PR Chair, he got the Good Guy Award for community activities there. Hyannis Historical Society, Executive Secretary and founding member. 375 Town of Barnstable Celebration Committee, co-chair. Attended the Police Academy and volunteered at the downtown Hyannis Police Station. Barnstable Housing Committee, Cultural Arts Center Committee, Seasonal Rental Committee, Hyannis Growth Incentive Lighting Committee, trustee and secretary of Court Yard Resorts, excuse me, in Hyannis, and Deb has served on. The Homeless Committee, the Human Services Committee, the Barnstable Economic Development Committee, Friends of the Hyannis Public Library as the treasurer, the Hyannis Supporting Our Youth Board inception to 2018, Hyannis Water Board inception 2005 to 2013. Helped create the board, this is about the Water Board, helped create the board when the Water Company was acquired by the town, and chaired the board for seven years, including the writing of the administrative code updates. That's our Hyannis Water Supply, that's that lady. Led the development of the strategic plan and its marketing, which included a capital plan to upgrade a 100-year-old water system. That's the inconvenient traffic. Moderator of the Hyannis Fire District, 2015 to 2018, I'm almost done, including the meeting that finally approved the new fire station. That was a difficult task. Not everybody was getting along. The Main Street Initiative, resident representative on that, where she received a certificate of special congressional recognition in 2013 from the US House of Representatives. She also served tirelessly, for how many years was it, three years, on the Transitional Living Center Executive Committee, which really ended up, after years and years and years of meeting, really only forwarding the idea that we ought to move the shelter. And then she won the Cynthia Cole Award in 2016. So, you know, I was hopeful that we'd have a totally full room, because I don't know anybody who's done all that for no pay. I don't know if you guys do, but I think that's pretty amazing, toeing the line, meeting after meeting, at inconvenient times, when you could be with your family, when you're sick, and sometimes when results don't really happen the way you want them to happen. Nonetheless, being there to speak up for your village every single time. So I was hoping, it's great to have such a crowd, and to honor the many, many contributions of Deb and Ralph. So as you come up and speak at public comment tonight, please consider your specific concerns, and ask yourselves what your contributions are to your village or your town, because these people come up, complain, and fix it. That's the difference, right? So we have many spaces open on our boards and committees, and I hope to see more applicants. I hope these people inspire you the way they inspire me, and we could use a lot more audience participation on our boards and committees, so. So it's long overdue, long overdue to you both. So I'd like to read the citation, if I may, and then I'll stop, and maybe you'd like to say a couple words. This is from the Town of Barnstable Town Council. Be it known that the Barnstable Town Council hereby extends its congratulations and gratitude to Ralph and Deb Crowe in recognition of the many years and dedicated service to the citizens of the town of Barnstable, and be it further known that the Barnstable Town Council sincerely appreciates all that Ralph and Deb Crowe have given to this town. And with the greatest appreciation and gratitude, the Barnstable Town Council and the citizens of Barnstable thank you. It's long overdue.
Thank you very much.
He's an election worker.
Yeah, Ralph works the elections, too. Thank you.
Vote in November.
Thank you all very, very much. We don't really do this for the recognition, we do it because we love the village of Hyannis, and it needs lots of support, and we're happy to lend our resources to do that. But again, we thank you very, very much. It is so nice of you to recognize us.
I also like to thank you all, and hopefully we get another decade in to help you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now she gets her ice cream.
Now she gets her ice cream.
Thank you, Counsel Cullum. Under the community... Under the community come-together scenario, I would ask Councilor Dagwan to go down to the mic and please invite some of our guests who did a terrific job on the Unity Day organization to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to say much because this is about young men from my community that I still call them boys because I'm like three, probably three decades older than them. They're young men today, and I'm just so proud that they stepped forth at a time when it was so important to recognize the issues that were going on in our country between law enforcement and young men of color. And they wanted to step up and say that that's not going to happen here in Barnstable. We work with the police department, they know them, they stepped up and Andre Barboza and his brother Jesse, Jesse who came up with the idea to do this Unity Day. So I'm not going to say much right now, and I would like for all of them to come up and each of them say something because they have to leave quickly as well.
Thank you. I'm not really one for the mic, I usually, that's my brother, but I want to thank all the town officials and the Barnstable Police Department and Chief Sonnenbun. You know, Unity Day was supposed to be, a lot of our friends from different regions, we were all going to do it at the same time. And they had so much resistance in their communities, and they couldn't get it done. But here in Barnstable, at every level, everybody wanted to help, everybody wanted to be a part of it, and it was just a beautiful thing. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody involved for making our vision come true, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Like my brother said, I'd like to say thank you. You know, four years ago, when it started, Jesse called me, said I have an idea, let's go down and meet with Chief Mack at the time. And we sat in the office and thought about having Unity Day a cookout. We had no idea it was going to grow into, you know, what it's grown into, but that doesn't happen without, like Jesse said, the town. You know, Ms. Lynn Point, I thank you for everything. You know, Chief Sonnenbun now, he took the torch and he ran with the same enthusiasm that Chief Mack had, and we're appreciative. And this wouldn't be happening without the volunteers, the community members in the Town of Barnstable. Thank you.
Could you say your names, please? Thank you.
Jesse Barboza, Andre Barboza.
Jason Gordine. Again, thank you, guys, everybody involved. I'll leave with the one quote, "It takes a village," and nonsense is not going to happen in our village, so.
Good evening, Brian Morrison, Barnstable Police. I'm not usually one to be in the front line or anything. I don't do much around here, but, no. Thank you to everyone in the town. Thank you to the Barboza brothers for bringing it to the police department and the town. And, you know, thanks to Chief Mack and now Chief Sonnenbun for allowing me to lend my services to them. I guess I'm kind of sort of the police liaison between the people of action and police department and the town. So again, like he said, it takes a village without all the volunteers and people in this great, not only villages of Hyannis, but the town in general, we couldn't do it. So thank you all of you for your support, and hopefully it continues on and on.
Thank you.
And next year, I expect to see all your faces out there.
And I just want to say thank you, gentlemen, and keep up the good work.
Great event. I was at the first one, I was at the last one. It's a great event. And it's just growing leaps and bounds. I mean, you can walk around, see tables of all kinds of information that's really important to us all. So thank you for the effort. And Chief, great job getting it together and keeping it together. Thank you. While we're in the community spirit, I would ask our Director of Recreation, Patty Machado, to come up and tell us about a possible red way to win.
Patty Machado, Recreation Director. So on, at the end of Unity Day, we were fortunate enough to be able to bring home the win. The Town of Barnstable Lifeguards competed in the 45th Annual Lifeguard Competition. It was held this year in Chatham. And again, this is our 11th straight win, which is pretty awesome. And we had people from all over the Cape plus Maine came. And it was a great day. It's all in great spirit and great fun, but I have to tell you, all of our lifeguards try out to be on this team, and 16 are selected out of our 106 lifeguards. So it's a pretty big deal to make that team, and then to be able to represent the Town of Barnstable. And they're just amazing people. And, you know, I have to tell you that even more of the great athletes that they are and the great lifeguards that they are, they are really nice people that you want to be friends with and you want to hang out with. And I'm really proud that we have these kind of young people that live in our town and make a difference. And this win is huge, but we were lucky enough to bring this back. At the end of Unity Day, we presented this to Paula, and it was just a feel-good for the kids. Unfortunately, school's starting soon, and we're starting to lose some of them to college, as you all know. But we wish them all the best as they move on, and hopefully they'll all come back so we don't have to do such a hustle to get more qualified lifeguards. We are very fortunate in the Town of Barnstable. And I thank you for your leadership and making sure that our beaches are safe and giving us what we need to make that happen. We appreciate it.
Thank you. As Director of Recreation, you also have an outstanding orientation program for the lifeguard. And this year, we were talking about lead techniques because of the shark issue. We were talking about all the things that can happen in the parking lot as well as on the beach. And it was very, it was very moving to realize that they're our ambassadors, they're out front for us, and they're the first, or many hours of someone that the first people recreating on Cape Cod may yet to meet. There was one point there where someone predicted they would win the swim trophy, so if you could just remember that out of your whole night's process.
Who was it that made that prediction?
It was me!
Oh, geez, I, we all knew that they were going to win.
We gave them the Go Red Raiders stuff, so thank you very much.
No, thank you.
We had a great season with them.
Yes, we did. We were very lucky, and it's not over yet, so we'll just keep on working.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank them for us. I'm going to take a 30-second break for a moment, please, councilors. We will go into the update and implementation of the Housing Production Plan with the Director of Planning and Development, Elizabeth Jenkins. And we hopefully will go to public comment shortly thereafter. Good evening, Elizabeth. Would you like to introduce, although we know them, your panel, please?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Jenkins. I'm Director of the Planning and Development Department.
Andy Clivern, Assistant Town Manager. David Anthony, Director of Property and Risk Management.
That's an all-star team. Where do we start?
We're here this evening to give you an update on implementation of our Housing Production Plan, which was brought before the council for approval in 2017, and talk about some of those strategies in that plan. This presentation isn't comprehensive of all the policies and programs we have relative to housing in the Town of Barnstable, but we'd like to focus this evening on four areas, four specific tools in our toolbox that have been very active and priority initiatives for town staff. So first, I'll turn it over to Arden to talk a little bit about some of the challenges we're facing relative to housing here in Barnstable.
So I think at this point, most people are aware that we have significant housing challenges on Cape Cod. Some people even call it a crisis. And from our needs assessment, these are the reasons we determined that we have these challenges. Our supply is insufficient to meet the need. There's a study that says the region, which is the county, is short 22,000 housing units. The cost of housing is out of reach for many of our local wage earners. A large percentage of our residents do earn low incomes, and therefore they're forced to spend too much of their income on housing. A portion of our existing housing supply is just not available to year-round residents because of our second homeowner population. We live in an environmentally sensitive area, and there's just insufficient wastewater infrastructure at this point. There's very limited available undeveloped land, and the existing supply of housing that we have already is of one type. As you can see, 83% is single-family homes, and that's not always the best choice for everyone, and that's not always attainable for everyone. It's proven that housing is the key to our strong economic future, that two issues are intricately tied together.
I do think it's important to note that over the past several years, that we have seen strong housing production in the Town of Barnstable. Since 2017, we have 270 new multifamily units that are occupied or with occupancy permits, 10 currently under construction, 116 that we have permitted and are in the pipeline to be constructed, and 40 that are currently in permitting, in addition to for Habitat for Humanity homes that were built out on River Road this year. So compared to a lot of other communities, this is very strong housing production. I'd also like to note that we have nine zoning districts that allow some form of multifamily as of right. So compared to a lot of communities in Massachusetts that don't allow multifamily in any form as of right, you know, our starting place here in Barnstable is fairly strong.
So how do we, how does Barnstable address these housing challenges? We've grouped them into four focus areas. We want to create new housing units to increase the supply. We want to assist our existing residents to afford the available supply that's here. We want to maintain what we already have. We don't want to be losing any existing affordable units. And we work in collaboration with the state, the county, and our local nonprofits. So specifically, our toolbox, and these are some of our newest initiatives, like Elizabeth said, they're not all of our initiatives, but they're some of our new focuses. We have a newly active municipal affordable housing and growth development trust. We are considering municipal land for housing development. We're pursuing zoning initiatives, and we have some incentive programs for developers. So a municipal affordable housing growth and development trust. Why are we invigorating our trust? Why does the community want to use a trust? Trusts are very powerful tools for municipalities. They provide additional support for the creation of affordable housing. They have the power to acquire, retain, sell, or lease real property. They can borrow, execute deeds, and employ advisors. One of the key benefits of a trust is that they can take advantage of real estate opportunities in an efficient and in a timely manner. And as you can see, that is one of our HPP's strategies. So the trust has been meeting regularly. They're working diligently to activate new initiatives that will result in meaningful housing activity. They recently submitted a letter of intent to the CPC seeking $2.5 million to be awarded to the trust. They're evaluating the staffing needs of the trust, how they can best support the trust to move it to successful implementation, and working with a consultant to formalize the design and implementation of all these processes and programs that will be needed. So specifically, what does the trust hope to do, especially if they do receive these funds? They're preparing to achieve these goals by providing subsidies for the creation of new units to developers, provide direct assistance to residents in the form of potentially rental assistance program or down payment assistance program, support municipal development of land, and provide pre-development assistance to determine the potential development of land so that we can move this municipal, these municipal parcels to development.
So the next tool we'd like to highlight is the use of municipal land for affordable housing. Over the past several years, the town has been looking broadly at municipal property that is underutilized and not serving a strong municipal purpose, and thinking about either how to put this property back on the tax rolls or other ways it can serve our community better. And certainly, by offering this land for housing development, it's a way to meet some of our housing challenges. So the importance of using municipal land for housing development are multiple, we all know it's very expensive to build housing on Cape Cod. So by the town contributing municipal land to a development project, it helps to fray that overall cost of development, and the town is essentially providing a contribution that makes projects financially feasible. You can create room in a development budget, again, to make projects pencil out, and also to make units more affordable to residents who really need them. Additionally, one of the strongest advantages to the municipality putting out an RFP for property is that, you know, it really gives us as a community control over where housing goes in our community, what the density is, what it looks like, what type of housing it is, and who it's serving. So it really puts municipalities in the driver's seat and allows us to address our housing needs in a way that's consistent with the vision of our community. So both Arden and I have been working with an interdepartmental team, really the ones you see here this evening, as well as others in key departments, to identify municipal parcels, again, surplus municipal parcels, that might be prime candidates for housing development. We introduced this initiative to the Town Asset Management Committee. One of the initiatives that they supported prioritization of was examining the former Marshance Mills Elementary School, which is now closed for potential housing development. So we've been looking at some of the infrastructure options and really putting together an interdepartmental team to explore development potential on that property. Simultaneously, we've been evaluating other potential sites, really from what might be individual, single-family homes to larger, multi-unit projects in all of our villages to try to best understand where those could result in effective RFPs for housing production. The third tool in our toolbox that we'd like to just talk a little bit about this evening is zoning and modifications to our zoning to support housing production. Zoning is one of the most powerful tools that municipalities have in their toolbox to implement policy objectives related to land use, growth, and development. Again, sort of in its best form, it effectively regulates the location rate and character of new development consistent with community vision. But I also like to think about zoning, not just as a tool, but as a technology, one that you have to keep modernized and updated, because if it's not done, if it's not revisited consistently, it can become a barrier to development. Arden and I work very hard to reach out to our development community and understand what it takes to get housing projects done here. And unpredictable permitting or zoning that's unresponsive to sort of market conditions is consistently identified. that's unresponsive to sort of market conditions is consistently identified as a barrier for developers. So something we think is important to focus on. So there are three zoning strategies that are highlighted in our Housing Production Plan, so I'd like to just call those out for you. The first one is one that the Planning and Development Department has been working on for several months now, and that's looking at our zoning within the Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone to allow for increased density and really additional production. As you know, we've been up here over the course of the past several years, bringing regulatory agreements forward to the council for some really new and exciting housing projects in downtown Hyannis. But those regulatory agreements, they don't necessarily represent a permitting pathway that's reflective of our need for housing and the priority we have to place it in downtown Hyannis. It's far from, it's certainly far from as-of-right permitting, and really shouldn't be our de facto for getting multifamily projects done in Hyannis. So we've been working on a series of grant-funded projects in collaboration with the Cape Cod Commission to update the rules to allow for the creation of more diverse housing options in the growth incentive zone and ensure that new development that does happen within downtown Hyannis is of a certain scale and a certain design that's representative of Hyannis, downtown Hyannis's existing development patterns. Developing in downtown Hyannis is a little bit different than developing in a lot of other contexts, because it's a, you know, it's a historic community, it's one that has a traditional neighborhood fabric, and we really want to make sure that new development that comes in is responsive, again, to those sort of cultural and community concerns. So we started out with a community outreach project that we called Community by Design with the Cape Cod Commission that went out and did some surveys and talked to the community, again, about what type of housing might be appropriate, again, in scale and character, and then, again, received a grant, a $50,000 grant to modernize our zoning in downtown Hyannis, really with the twofold goal, twofold goal to update our zoning, to allow it to support increased production. Number one, we want to make sure our zoning is something that's responsible, responsive to developers' needs and can get built, but also in a way that reinforces those traditional neighborhood patterns that are so important to, really, the look and feel of downtown Hyannis. So this is an important housing initiative, but I also want to point out that this is also sort of a fundamental economic development initiative for downtown as well. Really, bringing people to the downtown is a primary strategy of economic development strategy that we have for downtown revitalization and bringing people here 24/7. The next zoning initiative are accessory dwelling units. We have two current programs on our books today that allow for some form of accessory dwelling unit. One is our Accessory Affordable Apartment Program, which allows a homeowner, a single-family residential homeowner, to apply essentially through a mini 40B process to permit a second deed-restricted affordable unit on a property that can be rented to an income-eligible tenant. So that's one option that homeowners have. The second is our Family Apartment Program, which also allows for the creation of a second unit on a property, a second accessory unit on a property with a restriction that it has to be rented or occupied by a family member. So these are the two programs we currently have on the books. The Accessory Affordable Apartment Program, when it was initially created, was created as an amnesty program. We had a lot of these, a lot of these second accessory units that were out there, but unpermitted and not necessarily safe. So when the program first started, you know, we did a lot of accessory affordable apartment permits. In the more recent years, as we really see the objective become not sort of addressing existing units, but looking at the production of new units, we've seen very new, very little new production, and I do think that's really an unintended consequence of the fact that it is, it is a fairly cumbersome process to create one of these deed-restricted affordable units. A cumbersome, admittedly, both from an administrative standpoint and from the standpoint of the public. So that program hasn't seen a lot of, hasn't seen a lot of production in recent years. So one of the strategies that is identified in the Housing Production Plan is to allow market-rate accessory apartment program, market-rate accessory apartments to increase housing options. I'll note, this is a trend that we've seen on Cape Cod. There have been six communities, sorry, six communities across Cape Cod who have recently passed bylaws allowing accessory dwelling units as of right. The last initiative is top-of-shop housing. So this is sort of, as Arden said, a classic smart-growth way to integrate more diverse housing options into Barnstable's existing villages. So, you know, the nomenclature "top-of-shop," essentially, you know, small accessory units on the second floor of commercial land uses, really targeted at the workforce. Sort of looking at our different village districts, they're varied in terms of the permissions that they allow for top-of-shop housing. Some of our districts allow top-of-shop housing as of right, others allow no residential development at all. So one of the Housing Production Plan strategies is, again, to look at standardizing allowances, again, these very sort of small, low-density targeted workforce units in our village zoning
We also have some incentive programs in place to encourage residential development. A fairly new program that we have is the Housing Development Incentive Program. It provides a tax increment exemption for eligible developers of market-rate units, and it also allows those developers to apply for state tax credits. We were successful in creating a Housing Development Incentive Zone about a year ago. And then we also received a housing choice designation, which then allows us, as a designated community, to apply for capital infrastructure grants from the state, and Barnstable did apply, and we did receive a $250,000 grant through this program in 2018, which is being used for sewer upgrades in Hyannis. Then the ongoing business of affordable housing, which is maintaining our existing units. We monitor our units to preserve their affordability. We rehab, we provide rehab assistance to preserve an aging stock of our housing, and we pay careful attention to any resales or foreclosures of existing affordable units so that we don't lose the affordability that we have that took so much effort and resources
So we're happy to answer any questions you have. I do want to say thank you so much for taking the time for, taking the time to let us do this update for the council. Going forward, we'd like to provide you a quarterly report on our progress on Housing Production Plan implementation, much like the Quarterly Economic Development Report that we provide you. So you can look for that as a council and to the public going forward, and thank you again, and we look forward to working with you on these initiatives.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Counselors, any questions? Headed your way. Counselor Beeden-Bender.
Hey there. Thanks, Elizabeth. I am so excited that we're at this point and so glad to hear this presentation and looking forward to the quarterly updates. I mean, we all know what a tremendous challenge housing is here, and it's being felt acutely on the outer and lower Cape, and it's going to be hitting here in an acute way before we know it. I know a lot of people are already feeling it, but what's interesting is that, you know, we get into the affordable housing conversation, and we're not just talking, just so the public knows, that we're not just talking about affordable A, you know, capital A, we're also talking about just across the board. I mean, when Hack did its, sorry, not Hack, the Cape Cod Commission did its housing study a couple of years ago. They pointed to the fact that within the next 10 years, the income level that would be most acutely affected by the housing shortage would be the 80% to 110% AMI. So you're looking at people that we typically think make decent salaries that cannot cut it. So, you know, you have that group. Of course, you have your LMI residents. You also have seniors who are house-heavy and can't maintain the repairs that are needed. So this hits on a number of levels that are extremely important and needed. I had a question regarding, and I'm extremely happy that the Housing Trust has been organized and has been meeting. It's a critical piece, because you look at those towns that are doing the best on their housing production. If you look at P-Town, for example, it's because they have a housing trust and a dedicated person that is watching over everything that's happening with housing. So a question that I had regarding the trust, the CPC funds really sound like that's sort of the foundation for the trust? So moving forward, how do, how does that fund get augmented? I'm assuming there is an idea that we're building the trust, not just putting this lump sum in, and then it gets spent down, and we're hoping sales of something's going to, is there a plan for an ongoing participation? So, for example, in Orleans, at town meeting, they voted to put a portion of tax, of the resident taxes, into that housing trust. So just curious what the thoughts are behind that.
If it's okay, I'll take that one. So we're looking to get the initial $2.5 million, like you said, to kickstart the trust. We've been successful recently with the WS development to, where that, over the next decade, is going to provide about $2.5 million. The most successful trusts do typically come back on an annual basis, and that's what the trust is currently considering. That $2.5 million is really based on, there's about $1.6 million that's for housing now that should be dedicated, and then we up that to about, you know, another million, another $900,000. And then the thought would be annually to go back for that CPC ask for the trust.
Okay. Thank you. Follow-up? That's okay. I also wanted to just make a note of, you know, the various ways we have going about this, and I just want to speak specifically to the builder's portion of it. You know, as you mentioned, zoning is our most powerful tool, and private development is really going to be the major driver of housing in the town. What's also tied into that, obviously, is our infrastructure. You can't build density without infrastructure, so our wastewater management is instrumental to this piece and the funding of that. I was at one Cape, and I had some interesting, I took the opportunity to speak to a couple of builders, and, excuse me, there was some really great feedback. You know, I'd spoken to a couple who had done business in the town of Barnstable, and on one hand, they were very complimentary. They were, honestly, didn't say any, no smack. But I did ask them, I said, "If you could, if you could do something with the town of Barnstable, what three things would you suggest?" And one of them was form-based code, you know, simplifying the process and making it more consistent so that there's a whole lot, a whole lot less of hoop-jumping that one has to go through as a builder. The other, another small piece, tax incentives was another one. And then the third piece was actually to hold like a builder's, a full-day builder's workshop to sort of walk them through all of this, to sort of encapsulate everything that they need to know in a workshop fashion. So just some input from the ground.
I appreciate that input, and that's probably a good segue to why David and Anthony and I are joining Arden and Elizabeth here, is, as Elizabeth showed at the beginning of the presentation, there has been good movement in Barnstable, but it's not enough. You're certainly correct. And we had great success having that team come together on the RFP for WS. The other great success that we've had that's shown out, and Dan Santos mentioned it earlier, was having the working group meet weekly on that comprehensive wastewater management plan, and through the manager, we've requested from leadership the ability to take those steps for housing development as well. And the leadership has concurred, and that's really the next step where we see, really, those two programs that you mentioned and a plethora of others that are out there, bringing those forward and really rolling up our sleeves and working diligently towards that end.
Counselor Rapp-Cressedy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. I, as a new member, or I guess I've rejoined the Zoning and Regulatory Review Committee, I hope that one of our tasks will be to look at the accessory dwelling units by right. I think that's a big tool. From what I hear from constituents, they want to be able to age in place, stay there, and have an apartment for them to live in, and then welcome a family of four or young families, the workers, that are making the money and that can afford to live in a home, and maybe look after the senior that's in the apartment. So I really hope that we can move on this like other communities are doing and make it happen. Thank you.
Counselor Snup.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation, and I've been fortunate to be at some of the meetings in which the trust has been discussing a lot of the possibilities of what we can do with our existing resources. So I'm encouraged that it's going public and that there's a plan to actually put some additional, whether it's staff time or collaboration, to these efforts. I just wanted to point out again, primarily for the rest of the council, and, you know, the Housing Production Plan, I believe, is something mandated by the state in order to try to meet some of the affordable housing requirements. And so I think it is very important to talk about all aspects of our housing, but also to not lose sight of the affordable component. Of the multifamily housing production that you listed in the beginning, would you, is there a certain percentage that would meet those affordable requirements, or is that...
So, yeah, a percentage of these would have been inclusionary units, so 10%. Probably not all of these, the smaller projects, if it's less than 10 units, there's no inclusionary requirement, but there was definitely a percentage based on the inclusionary ordinance that we have.
So we've had 27 completed units in the past, affordable units in the past two years as a result of that inclusionary unit or other negotiated, other negotiated affordable units through permitting.
The 40 that are in permitting very likely will have a large affordability component to it.
And you mentioned the challenges of our current accessory affordable, I never can get all the names in a program. Do you have a sense of what our inventory or how many, I mean, I've noticed that we are losing some of those units, so that...
We are. Our number is decreasing. Over the life of the program, we permitted 250 units, and right now, we have 122 active. We lose them through people who sell the house and the next buyer doesn't want them, they convert to a family, they are not following the terms of the program, and we need to do some enforcement, so for a variety of reasons. But not only are we not creating new, we're losing existing.
Finally, I'd just like to echo Counselor Rapp-Cressedy's comment that maybe a more expansive way of creating accessory apartments would be a good way, good thing for us to consider.
Hearing none, I'm working my way back. Counselor Cullum?
Hi, yes. Thank you for the update. It's crucial, and it feels nice to have a starting point, you know what I mean, where it's all written down in front of everybody. First, I want to say I'm thankful that when we look at municipal land, we look at municipal land across the town and not just in my village of Hyannis. That's very important to me, it always has been very important to me, and I think it's very important to the town that we represent demographics throughout our town and not just in one area. It makes for a healthier community. And then I wanted to touch base a little bit on the first-time homebuyers thing, because we don't really talk about it much. I think it's the best-kept secret in Barnstable, and I know of several families right now that could probably benefit from a down payment that's not due until they sell their home. And I would also like to get a name and number that people could call about accessory dwellings, because I know several people that are actually in Marston's Mills that called me asking about, you know, how, yeah, how to make them and what the rules and regulations are, and if they, some of them live in ones that they don't think are actually recorded, and so, just some questions. They have some questions to ask, so if you could do those two, that's great.
Or absolutely call the Planning Development Department. They can call me specifically. I can answer any of their questions. I can walk them through the process. I also want to let people know that we have a grant program available to people who are creating accessory apartments, so we have a $20,000 grant available to help them create that apartment, and I can walk them through that process as well. So Planning Department, Arden, 508-862-4683.
And then on the first-time homebuyers, thank you.
So we do run a, we do run a first-time homebuyer... So, we do run a, we do run a first-time homebuyer program through our community, with our Community Development Block Grant Funds. Again, it's targeted, it's meant to be down payment assistance, essentially to fill the gap between, you know, what an, what a sort of affordable income is versus the cost of a house that can be reasonably afforded by a person of that income. Again, we run it primarily in Hyannis for first-time homebuyers. At this point, I think we've kept assistance at $75,000. We've been running the program now for about a year and a half and have funded one homeowner. We got one homeowner into a unit in Hyannis. Some of the challenges that we face, and I'll let Arden speak to them because she's been integral in administering that program, is what we find oftentimes is that the gap is too big, that there are just not enough units that are out there, even, you know, even with that amount of subsidy that can be bought down to an affordable level because prices are so high.
Yeah, that's really been the challenge so far, and the prices just keep increasing faster and faster. The source of funds we were using were limited, so now with the trust in place and with additional funds that come with slightly less restrictions than the source that we're using, I think it can be a more successful program.
So, if I may just have one follow-up. I think we still fail at communicating these opportunities to people. So, I don't know if Lynn is in the audience, Lynn Poyana is in the audience, she is. I really think that these things need to be broadcast on Facebook and Instagram so that people know they can call and reach you, and I'm not saying give your home phone or your cellphone, but give your work phone, a direct line, so people can call and ask their questions.
We've been working with the banks because that's usually where you'll find somebody who's ready to buy, and we work with the Realtors Association, you know, Ryan Castle was kind enough. I went to a, one of their sort of open houses where they're going out on a tour, and I introduced the program to them so that the Realtors can bring it to their clients, but to the residents, absolutely.
But I think like, you know, if, you know, what did Kennedy say? We're going to put a man on the moon. Like, let's get the thought in people's heads, because some people don't even conceive of the dream of owning a home here. But if they know there's 100 grand somewhere that can help them out, they're going to think differently and work harder on getting their credit sharpened. Call a lease over at Hack and say, "I want to get in a first-time homebuyer program." I just think we've, you know, these are opportunities that aren't in every community. You know, I didn't have anyone waving 100 grand in my face. So, I think it's really important that we show people how committed we are to improving their lives, that's all. Thank you very much for your hard work, I appreciate it.
Counselor Dagwone?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I also wanted to speak about accessory housing. I think that is very important. Many of us have, would like to keep our elderly parents and grandparents close to us and give us, give them support. But also, I see today, on the other hand, we have young people who aren't able to stay here as well. They're trying to find places to live, and many of them are living with their parents. I have one that's at home with me right now. And what I see in the minority community is that there are some who are losing their homesteads, their family homes, because the next generation can't afford to step in and pay the mortgage or take over the household. I have one, as I said, living with, there's an example living with me right now that I would love to see him buy our home. He has good credit, and they have, you know, fairly decent jobs, but at this stage, they would not be able to afford the property, our family home, at this point. So, we're working together, but I think that's another issue, and I hope that we can look at that situation as well so that people can, you know, their parents work so hard for those properties, and to see them not be able to continue to support the homesteads that their grandparents and parents have worked hard for. So, I just wanted to mention that as well, and thank you, and keep up the good work.
Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, great presentation. Thank you also for all of the work you're doing on behalf of the town relative to finding properties that folks can afford and pursue. Couple with that, the Affordable Housing Trust is something that's been long overdue here in this community, and I hope the monies that have been sought from CPC eventually will give you sort of that down payment, if you will, give you a foundation to build upon it. A lot of the issues and questions I was going to ask have been asked by my fellow counselors, and I want to go back to the accessory dwelling units by right. I think that's one of the most simplest ways, if you will, to allow folks, A, to keep their properties and B, create, if you will, housing opportunities for those folks that can't afford to go out and buy a piece of property based on their income or based on whether their status in life. So, for the sake of our audience and for the sake of us as counselors, I think what's critical is that not only we post something like that on the website and on Facebook and on Instagram, but there needs to be booklets and materials and collateral materials put together that are readily available downstairs in the lobby where the TV is, there's all sorts of materials, so that we specifically tell people how to do it. A lot of people don't use Instagram, a lot of people aren't on Facebook. Everyone can pick up, come down and pick up a pamphlet and be able to sort of have that recipe. This is what I need to do to basically create this accessory dwelling by right. And "by right" is a very, very strong term, and people need to understand that they can do that. Limited in some ways, but very, very critical is that it does allow for us to grow our inventory, so I would urge you to do that as a department. Thank you.
Counselors, all set? Thank you very much for the presentation, well done. My, if I might say, I also believe that it's the barriers that are creating the obstacles for us getting enough real estate that is at all price points. So, it is something that I look forward to working on in the future. Thank you. With Counselor's permission, I would like to take two pieces of new business out of order and then go to Communications.
Could we, are we going to return to public comment?
I would like to, I'm asking if you're not in favor, please don't vote in favor of it. I'm asking to go to two pieces of new business, and then I'd go to public comment. The two pieces of new business I'm asking to do is 2020-17 and 2020-16. And then we could, I believe they're very short and direct, and we would have a good clear issue. We have people that are here. I think some of the other items that we're about to face need some deliberation and some time, so if, hearing no objections, I'd move forward. Could I ask Counselinari, please, to read 2020-17?
Yes, Mr. President. 2020-17.
The last item.
This is new business to be referred to a public hearing on September 5th, 2019. It's item number 2020-17. The appropriation order and the amount of $203,117 for the fiscal year 2020 Barnstable Public Schools operating budget, as written.
Thank you. This traditionally is the first read to go to the second read, but I asked if our Superintendent, Meg Mayo Brown, would come in today and describe, it's kind of a two-part arrangement that was well discussed last night at the school committee, if she could just spell it out for us, and then we'll be free to vote on it next time without any representation. Thank you for coming in and helping us tonight.
Thank you for, thank you for the invitation, Dr. Meg Mayo Brown, Superintendent of Barnstable Public Schools and West Barnstable resident. I'm here tonight to request a supplemental appropriation to the school department budget as President Crocker indicated this was discussed at the school committee last evening. As you know, the state budget has been passed, and Barnstable Public Schools is in, well, the town is in receipt of Chapter 70 funds, which is state aid for education in excess of what was budgeted. The budget was developed on the governor's proposal with a 10% increase. We actually received a 16% increase of Chapter 70 funds, which is subject to the 60-40 revenue agreement split that I have with the town manager. So, I am here tonight to ask for a supplemental appropriation to support three positions. Two positions for school counselors, one at Barnstable Intermediate School and one at Barnstable United Elementary School, and then a technology network specialist. So, the total of those three positions, as indicated, was a little bit over 203,000. The additional Chapter 70 funds results in additional, in additional 600,000 in revenue. Currently, the school counselor ratio at Barnstable Intermediate School is one counselor for every 387 students. The ratio at Barnstable United is one counselor for 406 students. By adding a counselor at each school, we would reduce the ratio to one counselor to approximately 250 students. Given the mental health needs of students, not only in Barnstable, but certainly, it's not a Barnstable issue, certainly it's across the Commonwealth in the country in terms of the amount of behavioral support and mental health support that students need, we feel it was, it's wise to invest in school counselors at this time. I just want to share with you some statistics that I think create and support the rationale for additional school counselors in our school system. Nationally, 46% of all children experience at least one adverse childhood experience. That could be domestic violence, divorce, death, loss, drugs, or alcohol abuse. Studies show that only one-third to one-half of youth with a diagnosable mental health problem receive mental health services. Anxiety affects 30% of children adolescents, yet only, yet 80% never get help. Anxiety disorders are linked to a twofold increase in a risk for substance abuse disorder. When adolescents have depression alongside social anxiety, it is strongly associated with more suicidal ideation, suicide attempts, and more depressive symptoms. Anxiety is also a gateway disorder that leads to increased risk of depression, school failure, substance abuse, and suicide. I think those facts underlie and underscore the need to ensure, as we have the funds available, that our students receive additional support for their mental health and well-being. The third position is a technology facilitator position. This position, as you know, we have more and more technology infrastructure in our schools, so this position supports not what's occurring in instructional technology, but as we say, what happens sort of behind the wall. So, our network supports one-to-one student technology. It supports some of our safety measures such as 140 new video surveillance cameras in our high school. It supports the system that handles our student information, which is confidential and private. We don't want to find ourselves in a situation as we increase our use and reliance on technology to have any of those systems fail. So, I am requesting that a third position be devoted to supporting our technology infrastructure. These positions were discussed last night at the school committee. There's support for not only seeking the supplemental appropriation, but also the positions that I described. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mayo Brown. I think why this occurs in this type of a pace is because we're obviously coming upon the school season. We won't be hearing the second read until after September, and there is good due diligence that they could do to start to interview or get a few people moving forward to fill these slots if there was a comfortable vibe coming out of the council for our superintendent. So, I wanted to put this on the front side so that everybody could understand that they really would like to move forward, they would really like to start a posting process and try to be ready for the season, when in fact, we're not going to vote the money until the first, the first 10 days of school. So, that's the issue that I brought up before us at this, at this level. Yes, we'll open some questions. I think this is an important issue for us. These are new full-time positions, so we go through this with them when they bring their budget forward, we talk about full, part-time, we talk about all that at great extent. So, today, it's completely different for us, and I just would like to make sure we give her a fair buzz on how we feel.
So, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to move that motion that you just expressed, that we vote on this tonight for more timely use of the funds.
I'm afraid that's not possible. It's a one, it needs an advertisement night, and then it needs a, so it's a two-read, but we are having, usually we just move it to the date certain, we're just trying to make sure that there's a open dialogue here along the way.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Rapp-Crisetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Ms. Brown. Were these three positions requested but denied because of budget constraints when the budget process went through for what was previously appropriated?
Specifically, no, these three positions were not. We had over $3 million in requests for when our principals and departments during the budget development. These positions specifically are, as a result, we had a program evaluation of our school counseling department. We received the results after our budget development process. Going back into those results, reviewing, the program evaluation was done by the University of Massachusetts. As we went back and looked at the recommendation and started to prioritize those particularly around caseload and the work of counselors, it has become our first and foremost priority to consider those needs.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Yes, Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, Meg, thank you for the presentation. I think I agree with 100% that having been a former superintendent myself, counseling is critical, technology is critical, but more importantly also is the fact that with the increase of the Chapter 70 funding based on the governor's budget, first, I want to applaud the governor for actually sending us an additional $700,000. And I also applaud the fact that in this split that we have the 60-40, technically, the school department could have kept the entire amount of money, but yet you've stepped up, hopefully we will fund these accordingly, but the difference of the 500,000 or 600,000, whatever the exact amount is, we'll go back into our general fund, so I applaud the cooperative spirit, if you will, as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I do think, I attended last night's meeting where it was voted, so I felt clear that we needed to get this in front of us tonight. And I have to tell you, the one that seemed to shake me just a little was the IT coordinator. When you start to think of what they have to do to monitor all the space in, say, the big high school itself, and it was all handled by Dave in the past, so this will give them a chance to have somebody handle, you know, security, cameras, doors, all the issues that need to be addressed in a very timely fashion for the secure issue of our children. So, I think when you heard the explanations, when you heard the discussions, it was very clear to me that I wanted it to come forward for any questions that my fellow counselors might want to ask. I don't feel a bad vibe in the room, so I would take, I would take a vote to move this to a date certain of 9/5/19. All those in favor of moving 2020-17 to a date certain in a public hearing on 9/5/19, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays, any abstentions? Hearing none. Thank you very much for your time, an important issue for all of us.
Thank you very much. So, what I will do is post these as anticipated vacancies. We will not make any movement on them until after the next town council meeting. Thank you, thank you.
Give you a little bit of a head start. Thank you. The last piece of new business that I was trying to do before public comment. Counselinari, please. 2020 and 016, and I'd ask our manager, town manager, to come up, please.
This is new business, it may be acted upon. It's item number 2020-016, to resolve approving the appointment of Karen L. Novar as town attorney, as written.
I have a first and a second.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
I am well. Good evening, Mark Els, town manager. I'm pleased to be before you tonight to request your ratification of Karen Novar as our next town attorney. To back up a bit since, before I go into a little bit of detail about Karen, and Karen is here with us this evening, we posted this position, we were very fortunate to have 20 applicants to the position. We went through a, kind of a standard screening process to look at the paper version of our candidates. We did an internal review with our senior staff, and then I asked town council leadership, for the council to participate, and the final interview committee was myself, Andy Clyburn, Bill Cole, President Crocker, and Vice President Flores. We concluded that the candidate that we would begin discussions with initially was Attorney Novar. Attorney Novar is a graduate of Brandeis. Attorney Nobur is a graduate of Brandeis and then B.C. Law. She's had a thirty-year career in public service, playing lead council roles, executive director roles. I did speak with her references, and across the board, they were stellar. We were very fortunate to be able to have Ms. Nobur hopefully step into a large pair of shoes. We know the role that our town attorney plays for both our council, our management team, and our community. So I'm very pleased to be able to ask you to ratify Attorney Nobur. And she's here with us this evening, sitting in the back row.
I would like to take one moment before we ask her to come forward and say aye. I would like to take a moment to give some great kudos to a well-served career at Barnstable by our retiring Attorney Ruth White.
I will note that the council was very supportive of this transition, and Ruth will be here through formal retirement on January third to assist in the transition, and we thank you very much for that. Karen Nobur will come in as town attorney, and Ruth will be, I guess, former town attorney for her remaining time here to assist. So thank you for that support.
Lastly, I would like to also thank David Houghton and Charles McLaughlin for making this effort to be seamless to us. So again, thank you, gentlemen, for your effort on that.
Karen.
I'd like Karen to come up and, okay, great.
Where's the dunk tank? I'm kidding.
We're expecting great things. How are you?
I'm good.
Good. Thank you for coming to Barnstable. Would you like to talk about some of your past experience and why you're happy to be here in Barnstable? You certainly expressed it well to us through the process, so please feel free.
Oh, sure. So, you know, as Mark said, I've worked in government my entire career. I've spent thirty years in the public sector. Thank you. And right now, I'm the general counsel at the Department of Conservation and Recreation. Previously, I was the executive director of the State Ethics Commission for about eight-and-a-half years, and I was deputy chief legal counsel at the Massachusetts Port Authority for fourteen-and-a-half years. I'm very excited about this opportunity. I'm looking forward to getting to know the town of Barnstable, and I'm looking forward to being of service to the town.
Thank you for coming and making yourself available. This is a great place to work, and we're all in it together.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, I am headed for public comment. Oh, oh, I thought it was already done. Yes, that was two thousand, I wiped out my pages, hang on. Oh, I have it. On, I'm calling the vote on twenty, twenty, zero, sixteen, to resolve to approve the appointment of Karen Nobur as our town attorney. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstention? Please record that as unanimous, yes.
Thank you. I think I told Karen she didn't have to speak. That's the last time I'll say that. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, public comment. Let me please discuss a few of the rules in the chamber. If an item is to come up later in the night on an article, you cannot address it at the podium until such time as that article is being heard. If, in fact, we are not having an article at all, such as issues around Waukiet Lake, you're welcome to come forward and speak to that issue. And I would ask that everybody please understand that we try to keep this within a three-minute timeframe, and we don't do always that well with it, so we have a whole new little process for that. So I am asking our town administrator, I should say our council administrator, to come forward, move her seat in front of the clerk or next to the clerk. She will be placing a card on the podium when you've exceeded, within fifteen minutes of the, fifteen seconds of the last of your speech, and I will also post my card at the same time, and would ask you to finish it up. We all should know what fifteen seconds is. Fifteen seconds is a couple sentences. So hopefully, we can conduct some business here tonight, and I look forward to hearing from you all. Yes, Consul?
Point of clarification. I believe it's only those items that are public hearing that you would wait to speak, but if anything else is, can be acted on tonight and is not requiring a public hearing, you can speak during public comment.
If, if the room is full with people who choose to speak on an item, I will allow that public portion to proceed. There's a particular issue that's, there's two issues that are out there tonight. It was the issue of is there Waukiet or isn't there Waukiet? And the next issue is about establishing a stabilization fund. The stabilization fund at this time has two different articles on. The first one that would be read is the older one, and I'm actually going to ask for it to be taken out of order and put the new one first. And then anybody who would like to speak to the new one, I will welcome that opportunity. So with that in mind, I'm asking anybody, since I'm telling everybody that I intend to make it available to them, that they hold their time until such time as I bring that forward. Mic's open. Anybody who'd like to please sign in? It's a three-minute timeframe.
People have, people have already signed in, and there's a Rick Preston, who's first, if he, okay, all right, I don't want to steal, I don't want to steal your spot.
Well, thank you. It's nice to be here again after a long absence, a fairly long absence. I'll make it very quick. There's only two things I want to say, and it's about two twenty, oh, eight, which you might have expected, obviously. One, I wanted to tell you briefly my history. I moved here in nineteen seventy-four. I was earning fourteen thousand and five hundred dollars a year. I had three kids, one was five, one was three, and one was two, and my wife didn't work. And I earned fourteen-five, and I bought a house off Greenwood Avenue, just into Hyannis Port, for twenty-eight-eight, which is almost exactly twice my income. Now, as I see it, the, if I were doing the same job now as I was doing then with the same sized organization, I'd be making about fifty thousand dollars, and I'd have to pay three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the same house. So you can see what happened. It went from twice to six times, and that's happened in other places in this country. But here, we don't have the private sector that can create housing that meets the needs of a too significant and a growing population. The second point I have to make is that, since I've been in this business for so long, I'm probably the only person in this room, Paula may be the exception to that, that understands what's happened to our public support for housing development. And I'm going to list some programs, and as they were called colloquially. Under the HUD program, there used to be a Section Eight Development Program, a Section Twenty-three Development Program, Section Twenty-One D-Three, Two-O-Two, Two-Thirty-Five, and Two-Thirty-Six. They're all gone. None of those development programs existed yet anymore. They existed from the late sixties, for the most part, until the early nineties, and they went away. The USDA had two major programs, and I'm just talking about major programs that do core funding for rental or homeownership to make them very affordable. USDA had the Five-Fifteen Program and the Five-O-Two Program. Five-Fifteen was rental housing, and Five-O-Two was homeownership. And the state had Six-Eight-Nine Program, Six-Six-Seven, a TELA program, so-called, and a Sharp Program. Interestingly enough, every single one of those programs was used to develop housing on Cape Cod, and none of them exist anymore. They all went away by nineteen ninety-three. What replaced them in nineteen, I believe it was eighty-six, was the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. So the IRS is the housing development agency in our government. And I think it's kind of shocking, and I think there was a lot of discussion about why the government was getting out of housing. But what it means is, it's our responsibility here in the town of Barnstable to figure this out for ourselves. I think that, you know, the terrific report we got here recognizes that. And so I think that every time we have an opportunity to make a difference, to reduce this problem, we've got to do it here. It isn't going to happen with the state doing it for us or the federal government. Thank you very much.
Well, that threw that whole theory out the door. So this is mic time. Anybody who would like to speak, please come forward and be heard.
Oh, Ryan Castle's next. I'm going down the list, just so that I'm not, you know, cutting ahead of anyone.
Thank you guys very much. Ryan Castle, the CEO of the Cape Cod and Island Association of Realtors. Wanted to speak to you guys tonight, one, to support your efforts that all of you seem to really support, which is dedicate short-term rental money and lodging tax money being collected, room occupancy tax being collected, to funds that need to be used in this community, right? All of you seem to be in support of that. Fully support the Association of Realtors, fully support your efforts to dedicate it to wastewater. We believe that we cannot fix the housing availability and affordability efforts without fixing wastewater, that they're show-integrally linked. But we also think that you should think about not limiting yourself to just that purpose. We also think you should incur, should allow for the use to housing as well in the second article. For example, for reasons why, because it expands without limitations in state law. So CPA has some limitations in state law. The CDV block grant programs with like the down payment assistance has massive limitations on why it's not working, and Arden and I have talked extensively about that. This would allow some expansion to allow, to eliminate those restrictions. It also could allow you to do more innovative programs, like incentivized employer-assisted housing programs, and other things that are free-market driven, that can try to improve the outcomes on the housing, along with wastewater. Doesn't tie you to any housing programs. What it does is it ties you to the ability to expand that use other than just wastewater in the future. So I would encourage you to support it to also just housing, but also I want to commend you on dedicating the money to wastewater as well, because those are the two biggest drivers of our economy at this point, and we need to fix both of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to be our cue?
Next, Stephanie Cox.
Just so we're clear, there'll be no public discussion during twenty, twenty, oh, oh, nine, or twenty, nineteen, two, oh, nine, because we're having it here. Please feel free to speak.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, and through to the rest of the members. I just want to first thank you again for your leadership on this. I am a Ktewett native. My family's been here for fourteen generations. I am truly concerned that we will not make it another couple of generations. And that is because we just don't have enough housing for our people, and we don't have enough year-round housing. I work as a consultant both for Smarter Cape Partnership, which is working on passing those accessory dwelling unit bylaws across the Cape, so I'd love to come back. I'd love the opportunity to make a presentation, talk with you a little bit more detail about what other towns have done. But tonight, I'm here also on behalf of Future Cape Coalition, which is in support of putting aside these short-term rental funds. Again, putting them aside, making sure they are used, we have something to show for them is really important. So, you know, we're thrilled if you'll spend them, you know, towards wastewater, but we all are also encouraging you to put it towards housing as well. Now, the reason for this is, I used to work in the legislature, and I learned the difference there between May and Xiao, and it's a big difference. So expanding the use, allowing it for housing, means that you may, at some point in time, use it for, say, if you're short the funds in your CPC, which isn't out of the realm of possibility, because it's running out of money. It means that you could maybe cobble together a little bit of money from that pot, from the CPC, from another pot, from your housing trust, to make a land purchase. It means that you could potentially use that money to achieve multiple public benefits, such as if there was a housing development that was going in, there were wastewater concerns, you know, you could use some of that money to put in a denitrification system, you know, cluster system, that some of your neighbors could then hook up to, so you're killing two birds with one stone. So I just want to encourage the council to think about this as a two-step process, that at the, after you set aside the money, you can, you all get the ability to make the decisions on how to spend it, but it's one way to just not tie your hands. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for bringing this issue and your leadership. There's a lot of towns that haven't even started addressing how they're going to spend this newfound revenue, so I appreciate you guys bringing it forward. I'm Alisa Magna Galaxia, I'm the CEO of Housing Assistance Corporation. For forty-five years, we have been focused on the most vulnerable in our community, and our clients are changing. We have clients coming in who are stably employed and being evicted because their home is being sold, and the new owner wants to use it as a short-term rental instead of a year-round rental. So we have folks coming in looking for year-round housing, and we don't have enough inventory. And I applaud your housing production plan. I'm so glad that I was here this evening to hear that. It's a lot of, lot of different levers that we're pulling and creative ways of looking at adding inventory of different size, diverse types of housing in the region, which is very, very important. Obviously, you can't build a house without a septic, right? We need wastewater infrastructure in our towns, and definitely need this revenue to be going towards wastewater. But I encourage you, like my predecessors who are up here, to please, to please include housing in whatever proposal you put forward, so you don't have to come back and think about it again, and you can use it for other types of funding, as you heard them talk about, for subsidies for, for tenants, and for different types of subsidies for developers, as you heard from Rick, the former CEO and founder of Housing Assistance Corporation. Our funding sources for developers are diminishing and going away. We need other ways and creative ways to fund housing development. We have a legitimate shortage, and so your consideration for that, I greatly appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I don't know how I got this job. Tara, Tara Wallace.
Hello, my name is Tara Wallace, and I live on Lincoln Road. I'm here in favor of Counselor Schnep's proposal to put the short-term rental revenue towards housing as well as wastewater and water equality, or water quality. Sorry, I'm nervous. This is important to me because the housing crisis is not getting any better, and I think that this is a think outside of the box solution. I feel this proposal is one way to address a very complex housing problem here in Barnstable. Although I am currently stably, stably housed, I have been previously homeless, and dealing with, I work with the homeless, I work for Independence House, and I have seen the homeless problem just get worse and worse. And so although I'm stably housed, I'm also spending more money on rent and less money out in the community, shopping local. I see how friends, clients, and coworkers have had to uproot their entire lives on a seasonal basis, just to keep a roof over their heads, and unfortunately, have also witnessed with a heavy heart, many of my own family and friends move away because they can't afford to live here, or they just can't find a place to live. It is my hope that you will continue to support Counselor Schnep's proposal, because we so desperately need more solutions to attain more housing stock here on Cape Cod. Thank you.
I've asked Consul Neri to read the list. Thank you, though. I appreciate the start, but it was getting, it was getting onerous, so I thought we'd move to a council meeting. Thank you.
That was Tara. So we've got Mike, is it Falkson up next?
Hi, I'm Mike Falkson. I'm the current president of the Waukiet Lake Protective Association, and I'm here to thank the town officials for enlarging the sewage plan for around Lake Waukiet. We're really appreciative. We think it's the right decision. It's recognized by experts that the septic causes a lot of problems for the lake. It's a beautiful lake. We appreciate what everyone is doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Consul Neri?
Hi, I'm Michael McNally from Marston's Mills. I'm going to change the subject a little bit.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you, sir. I last spoke here on April twenty-fifth about the cyber crimes and the way they're handled in this town by the police department. I was followed out of this building the night I left here at eight o'clock. My wife and I were followed by Michael Lima, a patrol officer who was not in uniform, and one of his relatives.
I must stop you there.
I'm sorry.
We're not using names, so you're welcome to describe.
I will continue then, sir. If I said anything, I was going to be locked up until the investigation was complete. I received no contact from that man back there, the chief of police, like he said he was going to, Mr. Hebert. On March 7th, I went to the DA's office to find out what's going on, why am I being treated this way by the police? The same detective showed up at the DA's office that day, told me if I come back, I'll be arrested for trespassing at the DA's office. I was sitting quietly, waiting to speak with somebody. Four months later, no court order, no paperwork, there isn't a no trespassing order against me, there's no restraining order against me, and I'm still banned from the DA's office, and seeking the justice that I have been looking for, for five years. Three times I've emailed the DA, three times I have voicemail them, in six months, I haven't received not one response. When I call the office now, and ask to speak to the DA, or someone in authority, if I give them my name, they hang up on me. Or they give me a false name, and then I call back later, and that person doesn't exist. I won't give the office manager's name, who did that to me, sir. There are dirty cops in this town, there are great cops in this town. Unfortunately, there are dirty cops doing favors for dirty cops, and that's why I am banned from the DA's office. There is no court order, no paperwork, no order from anyone in authority, besides one lieutenant from the Massachusetts State Police. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Neary?
Next up is Mr. Frank Ward.
Oops, didn't mean to run it down. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council, for the opportunity to speak. For the record, my name is Frank Ward. And let me echo what Mike Falkson said. I come here as a taxpayer, and also represent the 250 families that are in the Waukewett Lake Protection Association, and the 400-plus families that signed the petition asking for increased sewer-ing around Waukewett. I came before you in July and asked for your help about the comprehensive wastewater plan, and you listened. Thank you. You initiated action, you organized a meeting between us and Mark Els, Andy Clyburn, Dan Santos, Rob Steen, and you got results. We are very, very thankful. We really do appreciate what you've done. We would like to see the rest of the nice neck surrounding Beer's Pond, but not tonight. Tonight, we're here to say thank you, thank you very, very much. We hope you'll support the version that Mr. Santos presented tonight, that 1A version. We're very much in favor of it. We look forward to working with you as you implement this plan, and helping with the funding, but thank you so much. I thank you, and the 1,000 families that use Lake Waukewett, thank you as well. Under three minutes, sir. Thank you. I owe you from last time.
Thank you.
Next up is our emcee, Ms. Tina Carey.
Okay. I am here, as promised, with my petition. I've been collecting signatures, which I am famous for. We, the undersigned, wish to express our support of local business owners, merchants, and tenants in downtown Hyannis area. We respectfully request that the Barnstable Town Council direct the town manager and the Town of Barnstable Licensing Authority to take the necessary steps to ensure fair business practices by banning food, beer, wine, alcohol trucks from the Village Green and Main Street Hyannis. We are not asking for a complete ban throughout the Town of Barnstable, only the Hyannis Village Green and Main Street Hyannis. Our local government should not be promoting unfair business competition against our brick-and-mortar stores. There are currently over 75 establishments with food and/or alcohol permits within a two-mile vicinity in downtown Hyannis. So the people that have signed so far are Murphy's on Main, Seaside Pub on Main, Dragonlight, Vanilla Chocolate, Brazilian Grill, KK Burgers Bar, Sunnyside Restaurant, Anejo, Tap City Grill, El Macho Loco, Grilled Cheese Factory, Tequila Charlie's, The Egg and I, Flashback, Taste of Sam, the Thai Restaurant, and Torino's. And I will get more for you, but this is all I've had time to do. And I really, seriously want you to consider this, because we are not having a great summer. And even though when you drive by on Friday and Saturday nights, and you see that restaurants are full, two nights a week does not make a business profitable. I talked to Torino's tonight, the owner there, and he has 90 employees at his restaurant. I mean, his payroll must be through there. I have 30 employees, and I just have a tiny little place. So restaurants are extremely labor intense. We have to pay people to stand around and do nothing all the time, because we just don't have the business that we used to have years ago, and we're saturated with restaurants. The food trucks are just restaurants on wheels. They're bars on wheels. There is a place for them, but it is not on Main Street or the Village Green. They can go to the beaches, they can go to private parties, functions, they can go all over town. We are just asking them not to be on the Village Green. When people come to the Village Green, we want them to come to the restaurants that are on Main Street. We're not asking for Bismore Park or Assleton Park, that's further enough away from us. But when people are right in our face, and we're looking at them selling out of beer and food trucks, it hurts the brick-and-mortar stores, and I wish you would take that under consideration, because it is the town that created the saturation of restaurants in this area. Somebody told me, who I was getting a signature from, that per capita, we have more restaurants than anyone else in the state of Massachusetts, per capita. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greg Keely.
Councilor Neary.
Kylie, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, councilors. I am bringing us back to 2020-008, if I could. I am a resident of Centerville Village. I also operate the fourth-largest real estate brokerage on Cape Cod, and headquartered in Ostraville Village. So, housing and wastewater have become my life in a way that I didn't realize they would, when I got my real estate license almost 18 years ago now. I'm just going to give you four quick stories that have impacted my clients and myself over the past few years. I had two small businesses that are successful in the North Shore, South Shore, western suburbs of Boston, and the city of Boston, who wanted to open up businesses here, in Barnstable in the past year. They had leases agreed to, they had build-outs all set, they backed out of those leases, because they could not get a workforce that could afford living down here, at the wages that they pay in Boston, at the wages they pay on the North Shore and the South Shore. I have two jobs that I've posted as a business operator, and none of my candidates live in the Town of Barnstable. I have two candidates coming from Wareham and Plymouth. I have three candidates coming from all the way out in the outer Cape. I can't get candidates from Barnstable, because they cannot afford to live here. I have a business owner that is a dear friend of mine, who opened up a business in Ostraville Village this year, lives in Plymouth commuting, is trying to bring their family to grow up around Centerville Elementary School, where the business owner went to school, graduated from Barnstable High School. They can't move back here, they've got a six-month rental, and then no house, and they are at three times the income limits that we would normally look at when we're talking about affordable housing. So this is a problem that needs to be addressed across the board, and to limit ourselves only to wastewater would get us part of the way, and I applaud you for getting that part of the way, but housing needs to be incorporated in anything we do, especially if we're taking tax revenue that is derived from housing. So I support your efforts, applaud your efforts so far. As next year's president of Cape Cod and Island Association of Realtors, I will continue to support you and stand beside you as you explore these things, but I ask you to please include housing in what you do. It is so critical for those of us who operate businesses, and those of us who choose to live and raise our families in this community. Thank you.
Next up is Andre, I believe it's Burke. Am I correct? Going, going, gone, all right. Eldon Ziegler.
Thank you. I'm Eldon Ziegler. My wife and I live in Centerville, where we are so aptly represented on this council. Also, just as an aside, Mr. President, I'm a longtime IT professional. I appreciate your remarks and recognizing what people in that category do. I'm here just to, you know, make a personal input on this. I received a couple of emails saying how easy it is to do this, so I thought I'd give it a shot and see if it works. On two things. One, of course, you know, we are very much in favor and appreciate the work that the council is doing on wastewater, on not only wastewater, but on the aquifers and protecting those. And that's not only for our own, our obvious, you know, for housing values and our tourism, but a legacy for those who come after us here, that we want to leave it, you know, at least as well as we've found it and the beauty that brought us here. Additionally, also on the housing part of it, that's, of course, I've been well-represented tonight, and I can't expand on that, but I would like to point out that, you know, as part of a position I had previously, I was with the U.S. Department of Transportation as director of a project called Dial Ride, which we have here on the Cape. And, you know, that fits in here, because as we've said, you know, the housing, you know, that we need for workforce and for social services, you know, will occur in somewhat of an unplanned way. We aren't in a position to say, okay, we're going to have it here or that, so that there's going to be a mismatch between where people live and where they need to be, whether it's for work, for senior center, and what fills that mismatch is public transportation. I would urge you to consider, along with the housing, to consider the integration with public transportation, so that the people can get where they need to be as that housing takes effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Neary?
Next up is Beth Marcus.
Good evening. My name is Beth Marcus. Together with my husband Todd, we are 21-year residents of the Town of Barnstable, living in the village of Centerville, and for 15 of those years, we have owned and operated the Cape's original microbrewery, Cape Cod Beer, located in Hyannis. I'm here this evening to advocate in favor of the proposal to create a stabilization fund for comprehensive water management, wastewater management, and community housing. Because as a resident and business owner, I don't want to have to choose between solving one problem or the other. We need to work seriously on both of them. Beer is 95% water, truth. Water comes from the ground upon which we live, challenging. A very large portion of the beer our company makes is sold to people who come here to enjoy the fresh and saltwater beauty that abounds Cape Cod. Protecting it's an imperative. I happen to live on a street adjacent to Lake Waukewett, where for sure we have the residents' attention, tonight especially, regarding water quality after multiple weeks of warning enclosures due to cyanobacteria, and for sure, the issues of emerging contaminants is a hot topic in many households and businesses in the Hyannis Water District. So yes, wastewater and water management are important, very important, but so is housing. Our business employs a total of 35 employees, 20 of which are year-round, 10 of which are part-time year-round, and five are full-time summer. About six years ago, we stopped hiring people from away. We stopped posting jobs on national brewery forums, which is the best place to hire brewers, and only hired people who live here. We specifically made the very first question on all of our job applications, where do you live on Cape Cod now, and where do you expect to live when you get this job? Because we can't hire people from away to come here and expect them to find housing. We tried, and tried, and tried, and failed, and failed, and failed. Does this make our lives easier? No, not at all. Recently, there was an opinion piece in the Cape Cod Times that said that it's the business owner's job to find housing for their employees. Well, let me stop and take a really deep breath, because I can honestly tell you, with the rising cost of minimum wage, the rising cost of insurance, and all the other things that we're putting in front of our businesses, including like PFMLA and paid leave and all the rest of it, businesses can't do it, right? So I encourage, you know, don't get me wrong, we love living and running a business in the Town of Barnstable, and we love Cape Cod, but if the opportunity exists for us to funnel short-term rental tax funds into a fund to support water management, wastewater solutions, and community housing, we're 100% behind that. Thank you very much.
And finally, it's Andre Barbosa, but I believe he's already up. Yep, already gone. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. You're welcome to have anyone advance, and please make your known name, your name known, and please keep within the three-minute timeframe. Yeah, as many as it takes. We're here to, we're here to go the distance.
My name is Lachlan Youngs. I'm a part-time activities coordinator with the Bay Bridge Clubhouse here in Hyannis. Last month, we applied for the CDBG grant funds for a project called the Cape Workshop Co-op, and the Cape Workshop Co-op is a project, a proposed project, which would provide, which would have its own facilities. We looked at 460 Main Street, and would involve a craft work, a free training in craft work program, as well as learning groups, if that, if you, if that makes sense. Let me try to repeat that. Free, free training in craft work, and also learning groups. And as I said, we applied for the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant Program, and another feature of the Cape Workshop Collab, excuse me, the Cape Workshop Co-op is that it would involve an all-inclusive meeting, which is, you know, debatably what makes it a co-op. You know, an all-inclusive meeting would ensure the democratic process and the running of many facets of the business. Let's see. This, this here is the proposal that we gave to the CD, to, to planning and development here at Town Hall, and the, I just want to speak briefly about what I mean by craft work. That would involve things like candle-making, ceramics, sewing, candle-making, you know, candle-making, ceramics, sewing, music, a music program, music theory. And as far as learning groups goes, what we refer to as learning groups, we, we mean arts and sciences, college-level arts and sciences, in a roundtable format, suitable for the layman. More specifically, what I mean is that we are geared towards focusing our program for the, for unemployed American, unemployed residents of the town and the Cape, as well as adults with mental illness, people in recovery. We want to focus towards, we want to help the homeless, we want to make this program available towards the homeless, we think this would benefit them greatly, people with, and that's about it. Except that I want to propose that town funds be used to fund this program from the, from the general fund. We're asking for 50, excuse me, we're asking for $35,000. I have the, anybody interested?
You're welcome to give it to the clerk. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be heard? Hi, how are you?
Hi, Wendy Northcross, CEO of the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to note that I am one of your resident volunteers on the Affordable Housing and Development Trust Fund, whatever the name is, does not roll off the tongue, but we had a great meeting today, talking about ramping that, that up. I'm actually here today to add my voice. of many facets of the business. Let's see. This here is the proposal that we gave to the CD, to Planning and Development here at Town Hall. And I just want to speak briefly about what I mean by craft work. That would involve things like candle making, ceramics, sewing, candle making, you know, candle making, ceramics, sewing, music, a music program, music theory. And as far as learning groups goes, what we refer to as learning groups, we mean arts and sciences, college-level arts and sciences, in a roundtable format, suitable for the layman. More specifically, what I mean is that we are geared towards focusing our program for unemployed American, unemployed residents of the town and the Cape, as well as adults with mental illness, people in recovery. We want to focus towards, we want to help the homeless. We want to make this program available towards the homeless. We think this would benefit them greatly. People with, and that's about it. Except that I want to propose that town funds be used to fund this program from the general fund. We're asking for $50, excuse me, we're asking for $35,000. I have the, anybody interested?
You're welcome to give it to the clerk. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be heard? Hi, how are you?
Hi, Wendy Northcross, CEO of the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to note that I am one of your resident volunteers on the Affordable Housing and Development Trust Fund, whatever the name is. Does not roll off the tongue, but we had a great meeting today talking about ramping that up. I'm actually here today to add my voice to the chorus of others in the room about applauding you for creating an infrastructure bank from short-term rental taxes. It's not every day that we have a new source of revenue, and I know that you'll use that wisely. Highest and best thing you can do is to help our citizens pay for the cost of wastewater expenses that are headed our way. The next best thing that you could do is help our citizens and support the local economy with housing for our workforce. People of all ages and all wages are having housing issues. But I'm also here to remind you the genesis of those funds. So the funds are really coming from our visitor base, people that have the discretionary money to spend for a vacation. When they come here, they expect a beautiful and clean environment, they expect people to offer them goods and services, and they have a lot of choices other than Barnstable. So I just want to put in a pitch for the fact that the town needs to be a wise steward of its marketing, its destination marketing efforts, make sure that we're wisely reinvesting into that to make sure that our guests want to still continue to come and put the money in the piggy bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please sign in.
My name's Nancy Ayotte. I live in Centerville. So I'm here to add my voice for you to use some of the funds from the stabilization fund to, for the affordable housing. Right now, even people who earn $15 an hour can't afford what we call affordable these days, which begins at $1,200. And so I had, I have people who come and help me with services, and that's really the only way that I can maintain my independence in the home. And over the past two and a half years, two of them have told me about really scary stories about how they had lost housing, and one of them got a very stable place, and the other has moved two or three times since, and I'm a little worried about her still. So in order to maintain independence, a lot of us are going to need these kinds of services, and we need people who are going to provide them, who can afford to be here. And then I also want to say for the elderly people, a friend of mine who lived here 23 years but lost her housing, had to move back to Texas, where she still has family, but she didn't want to go, but she couldn't find anything here, and she looked quite alive. So I'd like to see you use that money to subsidize some rentals, help people to afford rentals that are here, and also to put the money in so that people who could make garage apartments could get some help doing so. A friend of mine now has a new house, built, bought a new house, not new, but new to her, and could turn that basement into an apartment, but has been told she would need $40,000 in order to bring it up to code, and that's a lot for a young family. So, and I guess I also want to add just one little piece. I have, I inherited property in 2010, and there was a garage apartment there, and I put, and I had to jump through all of the hoops. It's an affordable housing project. Cost me a lot of money to get done, really worth it to me. Have a very nice tenant, hope he lives forever, long as I do, and he couldn't, I know from, I know his situation, he couldn't afford the $1,200 that is considered to be affordable. So anyway, to whatever extent you can help with this problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to the council? Good evening.
Thank you, Council President and councilors, for this opportunity to speak. I'm Chris Clark, here on behalf of the West Barnstable Village Festival Committee, and we're inviting the community to the 29th Annual West Barnstable Village Festival this coming Saturday, two days from now, from 10:00 in the morning till 3:00. We are hosting activities and featuring food and crafters from all along Route 149 on the portion in West Barnstable, also known as Meeting House Way. On the north end, we have the West Barnstable Railway Station open for visitors and are offering round-trip trips for $12. On the south end, by the West Parish Church at the 1717 Meeting House, there's a yard sale. The Meeting House Farm is hosting foam frolic, live music, silent auction, art at the farm. The Weldon Library is having picnic-style fare, bake sale and book sale. And at the main event is at the West Barnstable Community Building, where there's a classic car show from 9:30 to 2:00, hosted by former Councilor Hank Farnham, with a 50/50 raffle, face painting dunk tank, typically captained by Councilor Phil Wallace. Live band, magic balloons, canine-dog demonstration is a big hit, sponsored by the Barnstable Police Department. And the Barnstable Natural Resources is going to have their Barnstable Wildlife Showcase, which has been very popular, featuring wildlife in the area. We do very much thank the town manager and town staff for their support with the town services, not only with the Natural Resource Department and the police, but also the GIS Department, Recreation Department, and the outstanding support from structures and grounds and highway. Today, they were buffing up the village, and they plan to be there again tomorrow. So I can't say enough about that. Finally, after working on this for about 20 years and pulling this together, this year was the easiest, my easiest experience for obtaining permits. We had online permitting for the first time, and I very much appreciate the town following through to make life easier for us volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Charlie Hutzel. I live on Seabrook Road off Seastreet, and I go way back to when we moved in after purchasing a house. I think it's been about 14 years since I did that purchase, and Jen Cullen was running the Seastreet Market, and I used to go up there and get the most delicious sandwiches in town, however, she's gone on to other things. Since that time, and during some of that period, a thing that happened, we had a lot of trouble going on in that little Seastreet area, somewhere around a number of blocks in that area. And you know that efforts were made to improve those things, and they are improving. Seabrook Road used to have a nightmare of a four-unit apartment building that just constant kind of stuff you wouldn't want to have in your neighborhood. The good news is, that's been tremendously improved, but what used to rent for about $800 a unit, I think is renting now for about $1,400, or I haven't, I don't have it down exactly. So I, and we have the wonderful development all along the street there, you know, to improve the whole atmosphere. So what I would like to speak to is this issue of the housing and focus on that. Additional money is needed to help, especially on the areas of Nautical and Murray, if we want to get very specific. I'm thinking of kind of deteriorated housing. I'm concerned about the amount of trash, and I'm concerned about the number, even on some of the other streets, of trucks, three or four trucks per property. So these are, I'm looking for a comprehensive approach, but when I heard the presentation here about funds being available to improve properties, I think looking in that area, we might accomplish a few things. We need the housing. I'm a vote for put all the money into housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is our last chance to talk about all of those issues, including the stabilization fund, Wacocket Lake, any of those issues? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment portion and look for councilors' response to the public comment. I'll start down on my left. Yes, Council Dagua?
Yes, just quickly, I wanted to respond to, oh, to congratulate Ralph and Deborah Crawl. I respect both of them, and mainly for their intelligence and for their civic engagement. So it was nice to see them be recognized this afternoon. I'd like to also address the Unity Group that was here. We had the Fourth Unity Day, which is August the 2nd, from 4:00 to 7:00, and this year's Unity Day drew close to 400 people. So it's still growing, and not only did they have fun activities and free food, but it was nice to see that we had voter registration out there to try and gauge a lot of our young people to pay attention to government, not only local, but state and nationally, that it's important that they do exercise their voting rights, and that they can register early before they're allowed to vote. So I did want to mention that. And also, this group also recognized one of our achievers this year, and trying to get his name. I know my sister happened to name, started a tradition in our family that she named all of, started with naming granddaughters, for my mother's granddaughter's first names with T, so those of us of color, many of us have not gone to the, you know, the basic simple names like Jessica, Britt, Deb, Jen, Paula. These girls' names are all McTees, Talia, Taylan, you know, just, well, anyway, the reason I say that is I can't remember the young man who was at the Unity Day, who received a full scholarship to go to school to study medicine. And he's a Barnstable High School graduate. So I just want to say the Unity Group is, you know, really was a nice event, and it's bringing more and more people into the community to participate on it. I'd like to also just recognize Patty Machado again for the lifeguard recognition. Patty puts a lot, she doesn't take, takes account for a lot of it, but Patty puts a lot of work into this, and our beaches were loaded this summer, and it was just nice to see that we had enough lifeguards to get the job done. And lastly, I just want to thank Tara Wallace, who came up and spoke about homelessness, to help those who want housing, find housing. Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. Yes, going back this way. Council Beeden Bender?
Thank you. Just a response to public comment in general. And I do just want to say, Britt is an unusual name, just so you know. I haven't met too many female Brits. You have to go to Europe for that, so. And my dad was in love with Britt Eklund, so that's how it all started. So anyway, I just, in a blanket statement, I just want to thank everyone who came out tonight and spoke at public comment. It's a really important, important part of the process. And, you know, there are some of you who are regularly engaged, and I know for some of you, this was a first time, and it's really important to have your voice heard, because we do, we take notes, and we do pay attention, and we do follow up. I also want to say that I think there's going to be a fairly robust conversation around the housing piece, so I'm not going to address that now. It will happen later. But I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of your comments, and I appreciate that you came out tonight.
Hearing no further. Yes, Council Snapp?
I just want to echo Council Beeden Bender's appreciation for everybody who came out, and especially since, you know, public comment was a little bit later in the meeting, you know, your patience and persistence to stay. So thank you very much.
Last call. Yes, I have the Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo my fellow councilors' comments relative to really good, solid-quality public comment this evening. And when I came to the meeting and had really studied the agenda at length, the whole issue of the Water Stabilization Fund was first and foremost, but there have been compelling discussions and comments relative to housing. And, you know, personally, I believe that when you put water against housing, water really trumps the housing-related issue, because if you don't have quality water, you don't have, no one's going to want to live here. But nonetheless, I think the arguments and the support, the supportive comments relative to also including housing is something to seriously consider as we move forward this evening. I've been moved a little bit in terms of rethinking my, rethinking where I stand on that. Thank you.
Hearing no other councilors, I would ask our town manager to come forward for town manager communications.
Good evening, Markell's Town Manager. Before I go into my town manager's update, I'd just like to say that as a result of conversations with our leadership and our continued progress on some of the most challenging issues we have in our community relevant to water and wastewater, we found our establishment of a team approach, meaning myself, the Assistant Town Manager, and the respective directors, whether they be DPW Finance, with leadership, to be a very effective way to not only look at what we're doing on the administrative, technical side, but to engage in a discussion about the broader policy issues that come with whatever task we have at hand. The task of housing is a tremendous challenge for our community. I have asked our leadership to work with me in a similar fashion by creating a working group. We hope and intend to complete the Comprehensive Water Management Plan. I know those issues won't go away, and there'll certainly be occasion to continue to meet on them, but I believe the transition over to housing is a good opportunity to follow that same model. And I know that I've asked our leadership, and our leadership has agreed that that is appropriate. So you will see us transitioning into that, and I hope that will continue until we complete housing and we're ready to move into the next one. So, thank you. This is the town manager update for the period of July 19 through August 15. On July 23rd, 2019, Cape Cod experienced an extreme weather event with tornadoes touching down in Yarmouth and Harwich. Local, county, state, federal, and private officials rapidly responded to the situation. To my knowledge, there was no loss of life, but there was significant damage. After cleaning up isolated impacts in Osterville and other locations in town, our staff provided support as needed to our abutting communities. DPW tree crews are still assisting Yarmouth and Dennis in the cleanup efforts, thanks to all who participated in the initial response and the subsequent recovery effort. We are proceeding with the tasks in the budget action calendar for FY 2021 as scheduled. Town Council's strategic plan, as established last fall, serves as a fundamental vision for the fiscal year budget preparation. We anticipate a joint meeting/ workshop with the school committee to review the financial conditions of the town this fall. We did it in October, I think, first meeting October last year, and all information will be available on our website. We spoke to this issue earlier. This is a summary of what occurred relevant to Chapter 78. I think it merits reading in the general sense, not specific to any requests that may come for the use of those funds. On July 31st, 2019, Governor Baker signed the 2020 state budget into law. The approved FY 20 budget significantly increased the Chapter 78 for education. The town's FY 20 budget development process used the governor's proposed Chapter 78 figure, which was $600,000, less than the final approved amount. The Budget Conference Committee, made up of the House and Senate members, agreed upon a significantly higher Chapter 78 number than what was originally proposed by either legislative branch. Foundation budget reform effort... Foundation budget reform efforts have been advocating for additional Chapter 78 with a primary focus on the increased cost incurred for educating certain student populations and the cost of health insurance. This higher level of Chapter 78 will become part of the town's base Chapter 78 going into FY 21 budget development. The additional $600,000 can either be appropriated prior to setting the FY 20 tax rate or other general fund revenue estimates can be reduced to keep a balanced budget or a combination of both. Um, Finance Director Milne is here when we move into the question portion of this, um, to answer any questions you may have relevant to this, uh, Chapter 78. We received a signed access agreement from Fish and Wildlife for the installation of test wells on the 250-acre parcel owned by the Commonwealth, uh, that directly abuts the Hyannis Public Water System. Town plans to conduct tests in coming months, um, on this and other parcels to determine if new public water supply wells are feasible on the various site, the town sites. The town shall continue to work with Mass Fish and Wildlife, Barnstable County, and the water districts in our community as we evaluate sites, um, for future potential public water supply wells, uh, and we'll keep you advised as we progress on that. So that, uh, those test wells are going to be coming up, um, probably late September, maybe into October. On Wednesday, August 7th, the Town of Barnstable Department of Public Works Water Supply Division held a groundbreaking ceremony for the Marha Filtration Plant Project. The new water filtration building at the Marha Water Treatment Plant will ensure the town's ability to meet new stricter federal and state regulations for the emerging contaminants PFOS and, um, dioxins and other, um, actually, there, there are other contaminants, though they are not, uh, they are more aesthetic rather than health-related, um, in the removal of magnesium and iron. Um, this project is essential to our continued efforts to supply our town with drinking water that meets all state and federal standards. On August 7th, the airport staff briefed senior staff on, um, Phase Two PFOS investigation, which basically identifies the extent of the contamination at the airport. The next step is to develop recommended alternatives to address any concerns. We have briefed the county on the findings of the study and will continue to work in coordination with the county and state officials to address this matter. Uh, and we'll keep you advised on the progress of that issue. On August 14th, the Director of Public Works convened the second meeting of the Barnstable Water Purveyors to continue our ongoing efforts to communicate and coordinate relative to the many challenges facing public water supplies. The focus of the meeting was to share plans for future public water supply and develop a comprehensive illustration of those plans. Basically, so all the water districts are coordinating on, on what, what their planning says they need to accommodate their future needs. And then cumulatively, we can look across our community as we make decisions as to where we might cite additional water supply. We'll keep you advised as we progress on that effort. On July 18th, the Town of Barnstable Mashpee Falmouth Born and Sandwich met with Wright Pierce to discuss the regional efforts to evaluate Joint Base Cape Cod for potential future use of wastewater treatment and disposal. We discussed the completion of the updated Shared Wa- Wastewater Management Study. And I've given you the link to that study. It's up for about 30 days. So if you go into the link, you can see the, um, study that's been done. If you can't get into that link, let me know. And you can't get into the link, um, and we will, um, provide you either a, a better link or a hard copy if you need it. Wasn't happy to do that. Uh, just let, actually, just let Dan Santos know and he'll get that to you. Where, the, the study is, was really scheduled for completion in August of 2019. And subsequently, um, Wright Pierce is out there presenting this, uh, study. Uh, this was funded by two Community Compact Cabinet Efficiency and Regionalization Grants for a Shared Watershed Management Study. The Town of Barnstable subsequently joined this effort and provided additional funding to allow the, the Town of Barnstable to be included in the evaluation and to perform additional economic evaluation relevant to the Town of Barnstable's Letter of Intent submitted by the Town of Barnstable in response to the Statement of Needs issued by Joint Base Cape Cod regarding the town's interest in water and wastewater facilities at Joint Base Cape Cod. Director Santos, um, referred to that earlier in his wastewater update. Um, and, and we've received subsequent letters to that. And we, we, we are, uh, we are expected to provide a response letter, um, by September 30th relevant to our proposal, um, to, to, um, look to take over water and wastewater, um, at Joint Base Cape Cod. And we are in the process of preparing that and we will continue to advise you as we progress on that. Town Council appointed the Town Manager as its representative to the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund Board. Our second Bylaws Committee meeting is scheduled for September 4th. Um, the, the website for the board has been created by the Cape Cod Commission Staff, and I've given you the link. Hopefully that link worked. You can check that out. If it doesn't, let me know. We'll double check it. I met with Vineyard Wind on August 13th, and the following update to the Phase One project was provided. Vineyard Wind was sched- was scheduled, um, to receive its final environmental impact statement from the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management this summer, with final sign-off shortly afterwards. On Friday, the U.S. Department of Interior and the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management announced that they would require a supplemental analysis covering cumulative impacts of off- offshore wind development beyond the Vineyard Wind Project, citing the anticipated growth of the industry across the East Coast. The details of this supplemental analysis requests have not been made yet, uh, made public yet by the federal government, but due to comment periods and agencies' reviews, it is highly likely that the project's approval will be delayed, at least early next year. While this will result in a delay in the project and likely require establishing a new timeline, our agreement plans for offshore work and other aspects of the project relevant to the Town of Barnstable remain in full force. The company will continue to work together with host communities, stakeholder groups, contractors, workforce, and economic interests, regulators, and a range of local partners to build this project and continue to seek, um, to maximize the many public benefits associated with the project. Vineyard Wind will also continue outreach efforts locally. Uh, they've organized and participated in more than 40 and will continue to do so. There was one at, uh, in Centerville Village this evening, I believe, from four to six. Um, I've listed those down below for you. I give you links and telephone numbers. Uh, Nate Mayo, um, and, and other staff is available, um, at any time to speak with you directly or to come out and speak with groups in our community. Um, I just stated, uh, Centerville Library hosted this evening. There's an information session at Koval's Beach on August 23rd from 10 to 2. Another one at Centerville Library, August 29th from four to six. Um, Vineyard Wind also engaged in the discussion with me about Phases Two and Three. This is Phase One. They are looking to, uh, the original host agreement contemplated a Phase Two. Um, they have now, uh, I believe that there may be a grant area off of, um, further south down our coast, maybe off of Connecticut perhaps, but I'm not positive, that they are pursuing and may result in a Phase Three. And they may be coming to us to talk about a landing here in Phase Three as well. So, um, I have, you know, certainly opened my, um, availability to them to continue certainly through Phase Two and to entertain discussions about, um, Phase Three possibly, if that's something that is, is in their future. I'll keep you advised as we progress on that matter. On Tuesday, August 6th, Town of Barnstable Town Manager participated as a member of the Community Health Committee of Cape Cod Healthcare. Cape Cod Healthcare has an important fiduciary obligation to provide benefits to the community it serves, commensurate with the tax-exempt status, uh, with its tax-exempt status, to ensure Cape Cod Healthcare remains steadfast to its mission, um, commitment to enhancing the quality of and access to comprehensive healthcare services for all Cape Cod residents. Um, the Community Health Committee is comprised of members representing healthcare services on Cape Cod, community-based organizations, community advocacy groups, and county government, um, as well as members of the Board of Trustees. I'm, I'm newly asked to serve on this as a representative of the Town of Barnstable. I've given you a link to their website, so if you want to try to go in and take a look at what they post there relevant to this, um, relevant to this particular Community Health Committee and the study that they've done of Cape Cod, you can do that. Um, it's available to any and all on, on Cape Cod Healthcare's website. Um, the committee reviews proposer, proposals, uh, to the annual RFP for community benefit grants, scores, and votes on the award of these grants. I've put a timeline in your, um, as an attachment to this report, so you can take a look at, uh, what this entails. It's, it's between now and the end of the year. Um, they're looking at administering grants totaling about $300,000. Um, and, um, you know, it's, it's a fairly large group that, that oversees those. By, by participating on the committee, it is my understanding that it does not, um, prevent Barnstable from submitting a grant. I just need not to sit on the review of our community's application. And, um, there will be other opportunities with other projects, um, to look to, uh, to, to look to other future funding, um, and it may be in larger amounts. So I was, I, I welcome the opportunity at this annual scale to participate directly and intend to do so in the future. The Town of Barnstable has been selected by Mass Development to participate in the third round of the Transformative Development Initiative Programs for Gateway Cities. The Transformative Development Initiative work with cross-sector partners to implement local housing and economic development initiatives and spur public and private investment in targeted areas. Barnstable was one of three municipalities selected into the Regional Pilot Program that will provide capacity building in the form of part-time, of part-time fellow and access to technical assistance. Um, George Durante, Senior TDI Fellow, will be working with the town two days a week over the course of the next two years in collaboration with local partners, including the Cape Cod RTA, Cape Cod Healthcare, Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District, Housing Assistance Corporation, and the Hyannis Chamber. Mr. Durante will assist the town and partner with implementing visions for housing, workforce development, redevelopment opportunities, place-making, and marketing in downtown Hyannis with a targeted focus on Hyannis, Hyannis's east end. Barnstable was selected as a TDI community based on the community's visioning and planning that has already been done, the strength of the identified local collaborative partnerships, and the potential for community engagement. That concludes my Town Manager Update at this time. Um, I can answer any questions. And then I was going to ask Director Santos to come up, um, in response to a question, um, by Councilor Rap Garsetti at our last meeting relevant to, uh, Mass DOT Projects along Route 28.
Let's take questions of the, uh, presentation for the manager's report, please. Any questions? Yes, Council Bean Bender?
Hey, just to, um, the Housing Task Force that you opened up with, um, who are the, who are the members on that group or how, how is, how are you going about the selection of that?
Um, wha- what I did relevant to wastewater was to ask for the council leadership, um, to participate, for the council to participate. I asked for the council leadership to identify, um, who would participate. And, uh, from my side, it, it was myself, the Assistant Town Manager. In the case of wastewater, it was the, uh, Director of Public Works and the Assistant Director of Public Works, which broadened to also the Town Engineer, because we get into very, many, very technical questions. And then the Director of Finance has been participating. Um, when we move into housing, I would engage the same discussion with the leadership. Um, I would be at a minimum, the Assistant Town Manager, the Town Manager, and the Finance Director. My recommendation would include the Planning and Development Director, um, and her, um, appropriate staff, and then I would ask the council. It, it's very useful to be able to upfront, talk about the policy issues that come with any and all that we do when we undertake major efforts like this. So that I, I feel as though this has been a very effective way for us to be able to move forward with our priorities. I, I would recommend some sort of approach like this on any major issue, um, that we have, so.
Just one follow-up question, if I could. Thanks. Um, different subject. Uh, this is relative to the, the, the unfortunate turn of events where Vineyard Wind is concerned. Um, and so what I just want to reference is the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan and the projects that we currently have planned, um, vis-à-vis the Vineyard Wind, um, piece. I'm assuming that any delay of the Vineyard Wind project, because we were planning on co-locating with certain projects to save the town millions, that those projects would be moved to, to reflect the Vineyard Wind setback. So if they got pushed back a year, my assumption is that those projects would get pa- pushed back a year. Is that correct to assume that?
That is, that is a logical assumption. Um, depending on opportunity beyond, I mean, we're not doing the project because of Vineyard Wind.
Correct.
We're taking advantage of the fact that we're going to save costs because of Vineyard Wind.
Right.
Um, so we really need to step back and look at the priorities and what we need to occur when. Um, we also have considerations relevant to SRF funding and the timelines that are associated with that. Um, obviously, if we deviate from the current shared sort of approach, we would incur greater cost, 30% at least. So we're going to have to look at that and we're going to have to make those decisions. Um, I, I, we have been very successful in working with programs such as the State Revolving Fund in the past. So I think with, with ample notice, um, I'm, I'm relatively confident that they will work with us to modify a schedule. Um, but, you know, we also have other pending issues relevant to our environment and we can only delay s- action so long. So we'll have those ongoing discussions and, uh, I think you're logical in your assumption as long as it progresses at a reasonable pace.
Okay, thanks.
It actually helps us a little bit in the sense of, um, the logistics of, because we will need to bid this ourselves. They're a private company and they can't, they can't do the work for us. We, we will need to bid this, and if we're going to be eligible under the State Revolving Fund program, that comes with a whole set of requirements. So, um, as long as it's not delayed too long, this, this, this can still work and, and be of great benefit. But we'll, you know, if we're standing here a year from now, um, and we're having the same discussion, we'll, we'll be needing to have made decisions by then about what we're going to do relative to proceeding.
Follow-up, are you all set? Council Snapp?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Mark, for your report. Um, just a little clarification on the joint base activity. Um, the consortium of the Upper Cape Towns and Barnstable is just for wastewater? But we're also adding a water component? Is that part of the original Letter of Intent or is?
Yes, it is.
Is there any, any possibility that that would get split? We'd only do one of the two or is that?
Not, not to my understanding of what Joint Base Cape Cod is offering as, as, um, you know, they're, they're, they're... No, it's not what they're offering. They're offering wastewater and water.
Okay.
I, I think that the communities, given the, uh, challenges that we all have on Cape Cod relevant to wastewater, we're looking at the opportunity to, in some way, join the base and take advantage of the facilities, um, that they have at that location. Uh, at this point, though, they- At this point, though, they have put out an offer to come in and take over this, this water and wastewater infrastructure. They haven't said, okay, you can just offer water, or you can just offer wastewater.
So would the town in any way benefit from the water piece? Would we be...
Potentially. The true motivator here is the land that's available and the ability to discharge wastewater. That is a, that is a large challenge now, and we know that it's going to get far more complicated in the next decade, as much of what we, what we do in our existing here introduces chemicals into the environment that now may be detected in our groundwaters and in our water resources and become problematic. At this point, wastewater treatment plants across the country don't remove emerging contaminants. So to think that to cite an affluent discharge within an area from which you may withdraw your wastewater will be an easy task, it's not an easy task now. A decade from now, it'll be even more complicated. The opportunity to discharge wastewater outside of where we draw our drinking water from is one that we need to pursue, and that's, that's the primary focus. The scale of their facilities out there is smaller than what we currently manage. Barnstable has a tremendous capacity to be able to contemplate this, and so I think, I think our facilities are double what they have out there. On the other side, the infrastructure is aged. It's the end of its useful life. It'll all need to be upgraded. You need a complete cost effectiveness analysis and model to come up with a rate structure, and then those costs will need to be borne by the users of that facility. So on both the water and the wastewater side, both infrastructures are at the end of their useful lives, so.
So in the proposal that you're going to be submitting by September 30th, it will include all the potential scenarios and costs to the town, or, I mean, how much do we know we're biting off by going forward?
We have preliminary information. So what we're doing is, is trying to keep, keep our hand in the, we want the Joint Base Cape Cod to say to us, yes, we will, we will continue these discussions with you. Right now, they are not exclusive discussions. There was a private company that's interested in coming in, to my knowledge, and operating as is, they need to upgrade it, to modernize it certainly, but as is the wastewater and water supply. Their focus isn't the future potential for affluent discharge. On the water side, I would have to come back to you with a, with a better answer as to the opportunities that water, you know, viable water supply wells at that site may be a consideration for us. I haven't looked at that in, or at least I haven't talked to Director Santos in enough detail to answer that question right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Tinsley.
Thank you. Excuse me. My, I actually have two questions about the Community Health Committee of Cape Cod Healthcare. The first one's the easy one, or the quick one. Are those open meetings on November 14th, are they open to the public?
I believe they are. I, there wasn't, I, you know, the room was full of committee members. I don't know how many people other than committee members were there.
Okay.
I will get you that answer.
That would be good, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
But my main question is, while you are there, has there been any discussion by them of programs or initiatives to do with the opiate epidemic on the Cape and everywhere as, and again, not to paint them in a broad brush. As we've discussed this over the years, I've always been one that said they had to be at the table, because they did have doctors, physicians complicit in the proliferation of, you know, prescription drugs on the Cape. So I would like to see them, you know, as it says here, "As an important fiduciary obligation to provide benefits to the communities it serves." Well, as they were part of that problem, I would hope that they would be part of that solution, and I would really like to hear them discuss that.
My role on the committee, as I understand it, it was my first meeting, is to evaluate the RFPs, to administer the grant funds that they give out annually, and then, so eligible proposals come in and are evaluated, and I'll tell you after I review those proposals if any of them help to address the issue that you've brought forward. I think on a broader sense, the issue that you've shared is something that I can carry to them on behalf of our community at any time. Their doors are open to all of us, and certainly, to me, as your town manager. So any and all concerns you may have, I will, I will communicate, you know, immediately, and I'll let you know what's shared. We regularly work with them through our police department, certainly through my office, and I know that from time to time through the good work, Councilor Cullum and the others on one of our subcommittees, we communicate with them and at times work directly with them. So I'm more than happy to carry any message or question forward.
Council's question of the town manager's communication, Councilor Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark. We are afforded by coming to these meetings, being on town council and the public as well, to watch the progression of all of these projects that you have going, ongoing and ongoing, and more to be created later. Just a couple of things I just wanted to touch on. It's great to see you finally get signed access for fish and wildlife. I want to congratulate you on, on the groundbreaking ceremony with Director of Public Works Santos and all your staff. Additionally, I'm thrilled to see that with the town of Barnstable owning the Hyannis Water System, the study that came out a year, maybe a year and a half ago, indicating possible well sites throughout the town of Barnstable, not just specifically for the Hyannis Water System, I think is fantastic that pursuing the other fire districts to try to locate areas within the town of Barnstable as a shared community, as water supply for neighboring towns as well, that may soon occur, that these conversations need to go forth, need to continue, and hopefully bear fruit on, let me just say, less crowded areas of well placement throughout the town, and maybe more, more prolific, clean water in other areas of the town. So I think that that's great. I applaud Director Santos and obviously your staff for following up on that. It's very, very important. It's arguably, again, one of the maybe three most important things going on in our town and going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Cullum?
Yes, well, I guess you've been busy. It's four pages.
It's been a whole month, though.
It's been a while. I wanted to touch base on a couple of things. One thought that continually comes to my mind is how professional our staff is, and I think I've had the conversation with you, or maybe not, maybe someone else, about how. I don't know that that's very communicated, it's not openly communicated to our constituents. And I wondered if there was an appetite, I hope there is, to, you know, let people know how trained Mark Milne is and what Dan Santos's history is. Because I think, you know, tonight, when, when all the folks from...
You may, you may not want that question answered.
Yeah, well, I don't want you to know, I don't want to put my stuff up there. Come on.
Just keep it to the professional side.
Thank God Facebook didn't exist when I was in my twenties, but anyway.
That's right.
Let's move on. But like, it occurred to me today when, when all the folks came from Lake Wauwaket, super concerned, and, I mean, I wish we'd been privy to their discussion in there, but they all came in thankful, and I'm sure they felt very comfortable at who they had at the helm. And I just think it would be a really, a really good gesture to share the expertise that your staff has, because I do believe we're a pretty finely tuned machine. And I think that if that was communicated better, we'd, we'd have a lot less roadblocks and speed bumps, as it were. And then the second thing I wanted to mention was, I agree with Councilor Tinsley about this, about Cape Cod Healthcare. I've been waiting for the eight years that I've been a counselor for somebody to step up to the plate from that institution and say, you know, this is our, our responsibility too, and this is what we propose. And in the time that I have been a counselor, there've been a couple of people, Cheryl Bartlett, the first one, and Lisa Guyan, the second one, who gave money to the youth commission to do the prevention seminars and really fueled that. And also browbeat other leaders in the community, like the sheriff's office, with personal phone calls to say, "Help Jen out with this." And without their support, I don't think we would have got it off the ground to the extent we did in the very beginning. So I believe that they have, they have a real piece in that and a real stake in that game, and if they're serious about improving our community and giving back to it, we'll work on the prevention piece harder, because that's really where we need to be to keep the kids safe. And that's it. Thank you.
I like your suggestion. Maybe I'll work with Bill Cole on developing some sort of professional profile of our staff. You know, as town manager, I got to do it as a director, but I can only share with you as town manager, Barnstable is a unique community. It's a real privilege to serve here and with the people that stand with me and behind me every day, and, and they are exceptional, and they are the best in the business. I mean, we're not just one of the best communities in the state, we're one of the best in the country. And every time I go to another more broad opportunity to talk with other communities, the PFOS issue is a great example of that. You know, we are the model for how to manage very complex environmental issues. So thank you for recognizing that, and I think it's a great idea, and I'll work with Bill Cole to see what the right way to share that is. Thank you.
Councilors, any other questions? Yes, Councilor Dagewen.
Yes, I just wanted to echo that. You mentioned Bill Cole and, you know, and the, our employees. And Bill Cole was recognized this past year at MMA as having one of the most outstanding workshops. He was a facilitator, and we kept hearing so much from the people who attended, how well he put that presentation together, among many other presentations, presenters there at the MMA convention this year. Kudos to us again to have someone so talented.
Thank you for sharing that.
Councilors, I know others, you were talking about the director.
Director Santos, yes.
Would you like to give us a snapshot? It's 10 o'clock, so I'm trying to keep us on the schedule. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'll be happy to.
Can I start with my resume? It was a long, long time ago. I'm here to respond to a question at the last meeting. Councilor Rap Garsetti was interested in Route 28 and some of the problems and issues. And we said we'd come back and report, report on that. One of the, a couple of the issues were in the intersections of Finney's Lane and Old Stage Road with the condition of the pavement. And we have, we have spoken with MassDOT on a number of issues, and that being one, and they're aware of that issue, one. And we registered our concern with it and asked if they moved that ahead in their schedule into addressing the concerns with the pavement in those two intersections, and they're hoping to do that this fall. But also, a couple of other projects that are underway, Route 28 and Osford West Barnstable Road, they're going to be reconstructing that intersection starting this fall, and that'll be occurring through the fall and into the spring. That's a new signalized intersection, crosswalks, handicap access, those kind of things, similar to what they did at Old Strawberry Hill Road and Route 28, and much less so than what they've done at Bursus, which will be concluding in the fall. They have a little more work to do there, and that'll, that'll finish that up. They also have a pothole program that's running right now and through next week from the Mashpee Rotary right up to Bursus Way. They're going to be taking care of known potholes. They have crews out there doing that. And additionally, as you know, the Cape Cod Commission did a Route 28 Cotuit Corridor study a couple of years ago, and they made some recommendations relative to that. And what we're doing is preparing a project. We do a project information form that we will submit to the state on the Transportation Improvement Program to move ahead with those projects. The town, of course, will have to do the design, and we'll be coming forth with capital improvement requests for the design money in the next round, but we want to get on the tip, because that's a five-year tip, and be eligible to really look at the Santuitt Newtown Road intersection, the Main Street intersection, and the Route 130 intersection that's really kind of a mess and needs to be addressed. So those are the things going on. And finally, I want to say that, you know, the people that don't live here, that come here and drive Route 28 through Barnstable, believe that's Barnstable Road. So just like we did with the Rotary at the airport, we just get tired of banging our head against the wall to try to get them to do something, so we took it over. Now, I'm not suggesting we're going to take over Route 28, but when, when we complain, complain about litter picking or some brush back or something, we do respond, and we will eventually get frustrated, and we'll take care of it, because it reflects on us, not on the state. So unless there's any questions, thank you.
Yes, follow-up, please?
Thank you very much, Dan. And I'm very happy with the response from MassDOT. I'm afraid I took it upon myself on July 29th to write a letter to District Director Mary Jo Perry, and I copied in the town manager. I did not copy in you or my fellow counselors. And it was not a pleasant letter to write, but I've had so many complaints about Route 28 and the condition of that, and seen bicyclists and motorcyclists trying to dodge the fissures on Route 28. So I'm very happy to, that you brought the fact up that for six nights, from 9:00 PM to 5:30 AM, MassDOT is out on Route 28 from the Mashpee Rotary to Bursus Way, addressing that. They've already repaired some of the pavement at the Finney's Lane intersection, so, and I had a very nice conversation with the director, not with Mary Jo Perry, but she was on vacation, but Mr. Travers, Bill Travers, and, and I thanked him personally for their quick response, so I really appreciate that. If I may, one other item, because you left before, we could talk to you about your presentation on the update. If you could send that update to us in PDF form on the wastewater update. And also, what's the difference between a phase and a stage? The stage was purple, the phases were yellow or green.
The phases are only related to the Cotuit section. We've broken that down into three distinct phases, but...
That was a stage. That was stage one.
Stages, I'm sorry, stages.
Stage ones, which has me excited. Is that because of the possibility of joint base Cape Cod?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And as I pointed out, I tried to get on to write Pierce's page, and I was denied with my, my email, so if you could send me something...
Take care of that in the morning, and I'll send that PowerPoint along.
Great, thank you.
Yes. Councilor Bean-Bender.
Thank you. This actually goes to your previous presentation. Just, I was very happy to hear, I heard it at one Cape, that the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan had been reduced from a 60-year phase to a 30-year phase, and I just was curious as to what drove that. Was it because of the short-term rental tax funds, that now we had another revenue stream that allowed us to move at a quicker pace, or what was the genesis of that?
That basically came from this group meeting with leadership and us responding to, providing input from the public that we're hearing in these meetings we're doing, and, and the leadership saying, "It's too long, we've got to shorten it up." It's not that there's more funds available. It creates more of a challenge for Director Milne, because we're putting, you know, more, more costs up front, but we'll figure that out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As you know, the council has representation at those meetings, and the council is, myself and the vice president are bringing forward the ideas that we think reflect what we've heard continually, and your voice is heard, and your voice is rebroadcast, and we're trying to do something good and something that is sustainable in that program. So one step forward. Councilors, act on the minutes, if I could, Mr. Vice President.
Yes. Make a motion to approve the minutes from the town council meeting that was...
I have a first and a second to support or approve the minutes of July 18th as written. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
One abstention, please record that. Thank you. I am on to communications from elected officials' boards, and please be conscious of the hour. Counselors? Yes, Councilor Rap Grissette?
I have to say, congratulations to the Cotuit Cavaliers for winning their 17th championship of the Cape Cod Baseball League. That was a great season. So, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Dagewen?
Yes, I just wanted to say, we had lots of great activities that occurred throughout the summer, throughout all the villages, in terms of our cultural districts. And there's so much more that's going on throughout the Cape in August and right into September and October, and that if we can get online and take a look at all the various alts and arts and culture activities, I won't mention all of them, I do have them here that are going on in all the villages. And they just love, you know, local people to come out and support them as well. So, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Just Councilor Beedenbender?
A couple of quick things. First, I want to say, went to Unity Day. It was fabulous. It was a really uplifting, exciting event, thanks to the crowd, the gentlemen in the back of the room that are no longer here, that worked with BPD to pull that off, and all of the other organizations that had tables there with great information. But it was just, it was amazing to see how diverse our community is and how rich it is culturally. And so, I encourage anyone who's never been to make sure you put it on your calendar for next year. Prior to Town Council, I was, Wendy isn't in the audience anymore, but I was at the, and Paula Schnep was there as well, at the APCC press event regarding the Vineyard Win. And really, it was, it was a rallying cry to put pressure on BOEM and the feds to make sure that this project goes forward and to stress the importance of it. And I just want to make a comment about the fact that I had a couple of people approach me after the event, just to say, one of the things that has not been said that needs to be stated and out there is how much work the town of Barnstable put into that project, and that they wanted to commend the town and its leadership for doing all that they did to make this happen for this region. I also want to make a shout-out to Patty Machado and her lifeguards. Congratulations. It was really awesome to win that. And I just want to say, you know, our lifeguards are phenomenal for what they do to protect our residents and our visitors on the beaches, but a lot of people don't realize that they also keep the beaches clean. So, that's one of the side jobs that they do, all the public beaches, they do cleanup and help with cleanup, so I just want to thank them for that as well. And finally, just a shout-out to Chris Gennella and his crew for Mother's Park. Nature has not been working with you. It's really rough when she comes down with some torrential rain right after you put down some seed. But I will say that Mother's Park is really coming together beautifully, and I know it's a huge collaborative effort, so I'd like to work with you and our town manager on some sort of a dedication ceremony over there. So, just a thank you.
Hearing no further discussion? I would move to the orders of the day. With the orders of the day, they open up with an older, narrower reading, so I'm going to hold on that until we get to the newer reading. I would ask Councilor Leveque to help me with 2020-002, please.
This is old business, public hearing, roll call, two-thirds vote. Item number 2020-002, appropriation loan order in the amount of $975,000 for the construction of roadway and sewer work as written.
Thank you. I have a first and a second, and Dan Santos for the rationale.
You'll see a lot of me tonight.
I guess we don't need that webpage thing anymore.
Yeah. The Massachusetts Department of Transportation is scheduled to start construction...
I'm sorry, I'm mistaken. I need to open the public hearing and use you for the rationale. So, I have a first and a second to move to 2020-002 to a public hearing. All those in favor of moving the public hearing, please signify by saying aye. We are in a public hearing. My apologies, Dan.
Thank you.
Please for the rationale.
The Massachusetts Department of Transportation is scheduled to start construction next spring on a major reconstruction project of the intersection of Route 28 and Yarmouth Road and the four approach roads in Hyannis. During the design phase, the town requested that MassDOT include in the project the installation of sewer infrastructure to facilitate the future expansion north of Route 28 and along and east of Yarmouth Road, as well as additional project design features, including additional street lighting, upgrading to stamped concrete medians, and additional landscaping. These features have been, these features that have been added will improve safety and make the project more visually appealing. The proposed sewer infrastructure is included in Phase 1 of the town's wastewater plan to promote economic development and to protect the Hyannis water supply. After completion of MassDOT's construction, there will be a moratorium on construction within the project limits, which if we did not complete this work, could delay future sewer expansion in this area. But more importantly, there are significant cost savings to undertake this work while the road is open and someone else is paying for the repaving. Funding for this project will be provided from a bond issue. Future operating budgets will include the debt service on the bonds. $700,000 of this project costs is for sewer-related work, and funding on the portion of the bond will be provided from the Sewer Construction and Private Way Maintenance and Improvement Fund. $275,000 of the project costs are for the additional design features, and funding for this portion of the bonds will be provided from the Capital Trust Fund. There's no impact to the Department of Public Works' operating budget.
Thank you. That's our rationale. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'd take a first and a second to close the public hearing portion.
Second.
I got a first and a second. All those in favor closing the public hearing portion of 2020-002, please signify by saying aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Counselors, any questions of our Director? Hearing none. I would throw it to our clerk to take the roll call vote.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagewen?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Councilor Leveque, could I ask you help again on 2020-003, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, two-thirds vote. Item number 2020-003, appropriation loan order in the amount of $1,300,000 for the construction of sewer infrastructure as written.
Do I have a first and a second to go into the public hearing process for 2020-003? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any abstentions? Any nays? Hearing none, we're in the public hearing portions, and we would go to our Director for the rationale, please.
Thank you. The Massachusetts Department of Transportation is scheduled to start construction next spring on a major reconstruction project of the intersection of Route 28 and Yarmouth Road and the four approach roads in Hyannis. The town of Yarmouth received a state grant to perform an evaluation of future potential wastewater partnerships with the town of Barnstable, which would involve Barnstable utilizing an affluent disposal site in Yarmouth in exchange for treatment capacity at the Barnstable Treatment Plant. Locating affluent disposal sites is one of the primary focuses of the current planning effort. The preferred piping route is along Route 28 through the MassDOT project. During the design phase, the town requested that MassDOT include in the project the installation of sewer infrastructure to facilitate the Barnstable-Yarmouth project. After completion of MassDOT's construction, there'll be a moratorium on construction within the project limits, which if we did not complete this work, could delay future sewer expansion in this area. But more importantly, there are significant cost savings to undertake this work while the road is open and someone else is paying for the repaving. Additionally, this work will enhance the town's position in continuing negotiations with Yarmouth on a potential wastewater partnership. Funding for this project will be provided from a bond issue. Future budgets will include the annual debt service on the bond, which will be provided from the Sewer Construction and Private Way Maintenance and Improvement Fund. And finally, there is no impact to the Department of Public Works' operating budget at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for the rationale. We're in a public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard from the public on this matter? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to close the public hearing portion. I have a first and a second? Yes? Thank you. I have a first and a second to close the public hearing portion of 2020-003. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? We have the Director in front of us. Yes, Councilor Rap Grissette?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, will these two projects, or these two appropriation loan orders be eligible for SRF funds 0% once our comprehensive plan is adopted?
I believe so.
Oh.
Yes, we've asked for that, so.
You've asked for that.
There's been no commitment yet, but...
Okay.
We are pursuing that for all of these projects.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll throw it to our clerk treasurer, our clerk. I'm sorry, we're not the treasurer. Our clerk to take the roll call vote, please.
Counselors? Crocker?
Crocker says yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagewen?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much. I'd ask the Vice President to offer a substitute motion for 2020-006, please.
Yes, this is item 2020-006. It is old business, a public hearing. It will require a roll call, two-thirds vote. This will authorize the town treasurer, upon the approval of the town manager, to enter into a lease-to-purchase agreement to acquire five marked police vehicles. And I want to move that in accordance with the recommendation of the town manager, the town treasurer is authorized to enter into a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with Santander Bank for the acquisition of five marked police vehicles financed by the issuance of debt under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), or otherwise authorized by law for a term of 36 months.
And we have Attorney David Houghton to give us an idea on the substitute motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a graduate of, I'll save it for later.
I know, it's a good school. Don't be bashful, come on.
I'm wondering if this could be, I prepared this, I only received it from the lender this afternoon about 4:45. I'm wondering if it could be reread back into the record to add the word, so it reads "a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement," tellp, with Santander Bank, N.A. N.A.
Let us read that substitute motion one more time with the N.A.
The N.A. after Santander Bank.
Just so people understand, whenever we put forward something like this, we're talking about trying to satisfy the bond agent and the bond attorneys, and this is a very finite detail, but it helps everything go smoothly after we vote on it. So, again, thank you, and I would ask again for Vice President to read it in and start at the top and make sure N.A.'s in.
Okay, we'll start at the beginning, I guess. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, two-thirds vote. Authorizing the town treasurer, upon the approval of the town manager, to enter into a lease-to-purchase agreement to acquire five marked police vehicles. And move that in accordance with the recommendation of the town manager, the town treasurer is authorized to enter into a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement, parentheses, tellp, with Santander Bank, N.A., for the acquisition of five marked police vehicles financed by the issuance of debt under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), or otherwise authorized by law for a term of 36 months.
I would ask counselors to make sure we understand what the substitute motion is. I see that everyone acknowledging that. I would like a first and a second to enter a public hearing for this substitute motion, please. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none? We have an abstention? I'm sorry.
Sorry, through you, Mr. President. Just so there's absolutely no issue going forward, I'll be recusing myself at this time.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Councilor Tinsley has stepped down prior to any discussion and has offered a recusal. We are fortunate enough to have the Chief with us for rationale. Chief, how are you tonight? Thank you for hanging in.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm here to present the rationale for 2020-006. Basically, we are looking to see, enter into a tax-exempt lease purchase program with Santander Bank, N.A., for the purchase of five marked police vehicles through the Greater Boston Police Council from our usual vehicle supplier of MHQ in Marlboro. The real driving factor behind this is, as you know, we were granted $500,000 in our police budget for the purchase of new vehicles. With the cost of the rising vehicles and with the number of vehicles that we have that need to be replaced, and with the addition of the school resource officers needing vehicles and the Hyannis Youth Center needing another vehicle, we've kept a lot of vehicles over. They're really past the point we should. We have a number of vehicles, 15 vehicles, that really need to be replaced. By entering into this agreement, what we'll be able to do, and this really isn't an ask for any additional monies, it's just a way of using the money we have been given in a different manner to maximize it. So, what we're looking to do is purchase these five vehicles on a lease, which would be a fiscal impact of $190,557.45 over three years. But what we'd be doing is paying it in three annual payments of $63,519.15 each year. What that would do is the remaining monies would allow us to purchase some additional vehicles this year, nine more vehicles. So, instead of purchasing approximately 11 vehicles, we'd be able to get 14 vehicles for the amount of money we're getting, plus 10 MDTs for the vehicles and some radar units for the vehicles. We'd be getting fully equipped vehicles, 14 versus 11. And that's basically it.
Thank you for the rationale. This is a public hearing of 2020-006. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak to this issue? Hearing none, I'd take a motion and a second to close the public hearing portion. I have a first and a second to close the public hearing portion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we've closed the public portion. Any questions of the Chief, please? Hearing none, I would throw it to our clerk for a vote.
Now, we're voting on the moved, the amendment, right? The new motion.
It's a substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
So, we didn't amend the first one. We threw the first one out, put N.A. in as the substitute motion, and I asked all my counselors if they knew the substitute motion before we moved. So, we're on a substitute motion.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagewen?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Oops, sorry. Sorry, Wallace?
Yes.
Beedenbender? And Crocker?
Yes, and please again let the record reflect, Councilor Tinsley excused himself. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Schnep, could you please read in 2020-008, please?
This is a old, matter of old business, may be acted upon, a majority vote. Item 2020-008, order to create a stabilization fund for comprehensive water management, wastewater management, and for community housing.
I have a first and a second to put before the council, 2020-008. All those in favor of bringing forward the question, please signify by saying aye. Thank you. Any abstentions? Any nays? So, we are, have it on the table in front of us, and I would ask Counselor Schnep, as one of the sponsors, would you like to address the aspect? Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. This matter came up at one of our June meetings where the stabilization fund was being proposed for wastewater and water management. And I brought up a concern that, or a connection, that the revenue source is short-term rental money, and that's very connected to some of our issues that we have with housing. So there was some discussion on whether we could amend the order or whether we would create a separate one. So hence, two months later, we're back considering this with an additional purpose. As I think the... both the staff in talking about the housing production plan and our audience tonight spoke very strongly and passionately on the need to address housing issues in our community, but also recognizing that wastewater and water management are also highly critical issues. What we can do tonight is ensure some flexibility in our use of these stabilization funds. We're not mandated to spend it on housing at any time. We can spend it all on wastewater, we could spend it all on water management. Anytime that we're going to spend this money, it's going to come forward, and it's usually our Director of Finance who will, you know, recommend where the sources of financing will come from. And this will be just another tool. So I would like you to consider, you know, the thought that all of these are very critical in our community. We should try to retain the flexibility as a council to be able to spend money in one of three ways and to allow us to have some creative options where the creation of housing can be married with some really, you know, innovative infrastructure to deal with our wastewater. And I could use as an example the Morrison's Mill School, which is in Phase III. Well, I'm not exactly sure with the map, but, you know, it's out there. There isn't a lot of opportunity, you know, for that area to be seared, but perhaps if we are able to develop that as housing, we can do an alternative wastewater treatment plant, not only connect housing that's developed there, but maybe, you know, some of the areas in the residential. So again, I think that by approving this, we just... we don't tie our hands to what we can possibly use these funds for. And, you know, we've been given this opportunity to have this short-term rental money, and so I would encourage you to think about it and prove it. Thank you.
Yes, on this side, Councilor Beeden-Bender.
I would just add to Counselor Schnep's comments in that I think keeping some flexibility to what we do is important. I mean, I do think that, you know, housing won't happen without proper infrastructure, so, you know, I think always we need to be thinking about how are we going to pay for that infrastructure. I mean, we've already heard estimates of over $400 million to do what we need to do across the town. So we have to make sure that we are accounting for that. However, the reason why I'm okay with looking at this fund as a way to sort of build in some flexibility is for the very example that Paula just put forward, and that is there may be an opportunity where we are doing, you know, we know it might be a good spot for housing, but what's missing is that infrastructure piece, and there might be something that we can do creatively there, and we can use this fund for that. But as Paula also rightly points out, everything would have to go before a vote, so, you know, there is no... there's a lot of vagueness to this. It just leaves us flexible and open to choice. I would first and foremost like to see us solve our housing issues through zoning changes and incentives to developers, you know, and then the money will come from that side. But I, you know, I'm in support of this from the perspective of not tying our hands behind our backs and leaving us some flexibility should that need arise.
Working my way to this side. Oh, I got Councilor Tinsley on that side, I'm sorry. Councilor Tinsley.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President. I appreciate it, thanks. So I'm kind of torn on this one. We go back quite a few years. I was on the subcommittee when we first had the Comprehensive Wastewater Fund. And then we added the Private Way Improvement Fund as part of that, and I voted no to that. I don't know if I was the only one, but I was against it because of the $400 million. I remember sitting in the subcommittee, we were told it could be well over $500 million for our wastewater needs. And there were no towns putting money aside. This is something we just can, we kept kicking down the road. And now we're looking to add housing to it. We had a gentleman who spoke very well up here that talked about public transportation. Is that going to be next? And this was my concern when I voted no to add private ways, because we keep biting at that pie, and we've totally just... the entire reason for creating the fund has now been watered down. I also understand the housing side. Personally, many years ago, my wife and I had to approach hack. My daughter can't live in Barnstable, she had to move to Forestale. My other daughter lives off Cape. My mother's having a horrible time finding housing. I get it. I've been part of it. I would be in full support of a separate housing fund, but to water down the number one issue, it's not just one of the big issues, it is the number one issue on Cape Cod is water and wastewater. That's it. It's the number one issue. Without clean water, none of us have to be here. Nobody will come here. Nobody will come to our beaches. Nobody will come to our lakes. Nobody will come here, because there'll be nothing to come to. So I get it. I truly get it. And while I... as I said, I would support a separate fund. The wastewater fund has to be left as it is, and that's just how I feel.
On this side, please, Councilor Dagwan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I somewhat disagree with that, and I'm very happy that Counselor Schnep thought creatively and was acting proactive in terms of trying to propose this idea. I think that water quality is very important, but housing, to me, is just as important. We can have the best water, but if we can't keep people here, they can't afford to live here. Great water is not going to help us a whole lot here. We need to really look at this hand-in-hand. I hear the transportation portion of that tonight. Someone came up to public comment and spoke about that, and I was like, you know, that's another one we really, you know, could have. But I think that, you know, we heard that idea, that's something else that we can do later. Housing is so, so important right now, and the two need to be meshed. That was clear from the Housing Committee, from many who came out tonight to speak, and the fact that it's flexible, I like that idea. So I will be in support of this idea. Thank you.
Councilor Cullen.
Yes, so this is kind of like the third rail decision, right? What's more important? You know, I agree with Counselor Tinsley on a lot of his points, that the water is the number one, number one issue facing us right now, and that our future is about our water. And I'd like to point out that we do actually have an Affordable Housing Growth Development Trust that has 2.5 mil on the sidewalk and another 2.5 mil right behind that. And I believe that they should be a married priority for this town, but not come from the same fund. I think that we have an untold amount of money that we're going to devote to cleaning up our lakes and sewer-ing, and we need to really focus on that. So I won't be able to support this tonight, but it's not that I don't appreciate the effort, and I don't appreciate the creative thinking, because that's always important. I just think that we can do more in-house and maybe require more of our developers like we did with WS Development to help fund some of the initiatives that we want to do with community housing. And I agree with Counselor Beeden-Bender that a lot of that can be fixed through some zoning tweaking that hopefully we'll get to do together on the zoning committee. So thank you for your efforts, but I can't support this.
Councilors? Yes, Councilor Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank, obviously, the sponsors of this. Paula, anytime that we bring up comment, discussion, I think it bears fruit. Aside from the basic facets of how this is written, it left me with questions, and we talk about flexibility, flexibility is great, but with flexibility, you can get some caveats that come with it. And I'm just going to kind of rattle off some of the statements or thoughts that went through my head. When you have this revenue source, it's a new revenue source, it's welcome. I think we owe it to the public to have... it might not have to be a dialed-in plan, but it has to be some type of a focused thought of what we're going to do with this revenue. The water and wastewater comprehensive plan already has been established, it's already in place, so it kind of is our compass, for lack of a better word, in terms of where monies get spent. What went through my head is, so as this money gets accrued, who or what will determine access to these funds? Will it occur on a case-by-case basis? I mean, do... would an outside contractor or developers apply for access to these funds? Would it operate like CPC? I don't think the town is going to get in a position of becoming stewards or housing developers. Can't happen. So then my brain would go to, so we're going to establish an oversight committee for this, and then pick up items and then bring them forward. Ultimately, housing is... it's a function of almost philanthropy. When monies come available, the only real way to generate affordable housing is there has to be like a philanthropic piece of it. And maybe this fund would be that philanthropic piece. Maybe that would be something that would develop a pool of money. But again, we get down to the conversation of, you know, how does the town position itself to make a decision or create a position of how we should spend this money? And I think that the public has... there has to be some type of a give-and-take. Frankly, I would make a motion to put this off until September 15th or September 5th at our next meeting, so that this could be maybe established as some basic guidelines. The flexibility is great, but flexibility is a double-edged sword, too. And I think that that, to me, from the public aspect of things, I just... I'm not really fully behind. Be my comment.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on this side? Yes, Councilor Levek.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also reflect, I appreciate the effort put forth. I've learned so much from Counselor Schnep in regards to housing. I had a conversation with Councilor Hebert today about the same thing. It is without a doubt an issue in the town. Again, where I struggle, and I kind of echo what Counselor Tinsley, Counselor Cullen said, is that it's almost... it's gray area. We don't know necessarily if we leave and we just add that housing aspect to it. How far does it go? When do we decide? Does it depend on the leadership at the time? Whatever it might be. I also listen to every story in public comment, and I understand, but you also listen, and it's different sorts of housing that everybody speaks about. And we'll... and I'm asking, okay, so will this fund even address that issue? Or will it address that person's issue? Is it elderly? Is it low income? Is it workforce? What is it going to be? And whereas if we leave it to just water, we already know where it's going to go, and we know that there is a need, and we've also talked about recently, and we can make this water management plan, and six months down the road, there's a pre-emerging contaminant that comes into place, and we need funds immediately. And again, this isn't to downplay housing, but I just think that the water is... there's a sense of urgency in regards to the water that the housing doesn't have. So I would be against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, thank you for the motion, Paula, and fellow councilors. I think there's been a lot of critical discussion, housing versus water, and this is sort of one of those examples of, you know, does good become the enemy of excellent? Both are very, very critical issues, but I think we have to consider that from a town perspective. We are under federal and state mandate to really take care of our water supply first and foremost. The same does not apply relative to state or federal law around housing. And as Counselor Tinsley suggested, you know, water is the number one issue. Wastewater is the number one issue on Cape Cod. You know, we live on the aquifer that we drink from, and unless we can guarantee that, we have the appropriate tools in place, the appropriate discharges in place, then we're going to lose, if you will, the habitat of Cape Cod in so many different ways. Water is the lifeblood of really any community. We look what's happened across this country. I think of Flint, Michigan as one particular place. We have, for a number of years, been under the mandate of the 208 Plan, being sued by the Conservation Law Foundation to clean up our water. We have emerging contaminants coming in on a regular basis, lowering the standards by which we will be judged. And that's just to name a few of the current emerging contaminants that the EPA has basically lowered the standards of what is acceptable and what isn't. When I read this motion, this is for a three-year period that we will be committing this fund to water, and I think for the next three years, we probably should be doing that, but not at the expense of housing either. Housing is a critical part. There are monies that we can appropriate as we move forward, and I would also ask, we don't even know how much we're going to get out of this fund. Rentals are down on Cape Cod. We heard Wendy Nakros, President of the Cape Cod Chamber, say that earlier, that summer rentals are pretty much less than what they were. We've heard from restaurant owners that their business is down. So I'm not sure this fund is going to be a panacea for water or for housing, and there's no projections. We're going to wait. The money supposedly is going to be collected by the Department of Revenue and then come back to us in the form of a payment to the general fund, but we have no clue whether it's going to be $5 or $5 million or somewhere in between. And so towards that end, as much as I want to support this particular amendment, I still believe that water is our number one issue, and won't be supporting it.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Rap Grissette.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for... Paula, for putting this forward. You know, when I ran as town councillor, my number one issue was the quality of our water. And I was... I always thought that who should be paying to clean up our water? Is everybody. Everybody should share equally in that, and that includes people coming over the bridge. We wouldn't even be having this discussion if it weren't for this short-term rental issue that's come before us. This is allowing us an opportunity to garner some monies from the people that come and stay in our community, not only to help with our water quality, but also to help with the displacement of those looking for affordable places to live. The short-term rental is displacing the year-round rentals because of the money that can be garnered from the short-term rentals. So I feel for those that are looking for housing. And just like when Counselor Tinsley talked about the fund that used to be dedicated solely to wastewater and water being diluted by using it for the private ways, and by the way, that's not all private ways. Those are only the private ways that are connected, that connect to public roads can that fund be used for, and that's actually a major thoroughfare in the most regards. But... so we responded to that because our constituents complained about the quality of the roads they drive on to get to their jobs, to get to their hospital or their doctor's appointment. And we responded by, if you will, diluting the fund from the meals and rooms tax to that specific fund. It's been used for a few roads, not too many, rise to that occasion. I'm not sure what the housing aspect, if this is voted on, what exactly it will pertain to. However, I want to keep our options open, and I will support this, and I hope that we can garner the two-thirds required. Thank you.
Counselor Hebert? And it's a majority vote, not a two-thirds. Thank you.
So, you know, following what Councilor just said, every speaker that spoke about this issue tonight, many of whom were housing leaders, spoke about, pretty much begging us to take action on this. It should be flexible enough so that, because we don't know how much money's going to come in, and if we project that it's going to meet most of our concerns, but at any point, we can say, this year, there is no money for it. Maybe another year, we say, we can afford half a percent to bolster our housing. I just think that if we don't move forward on this, we just, again, box ourselves in, and we don't have any flexibility. So that would be my concern, to give this some flexibility. And to respond to tremendous public comment, that again, was all in favor of us taking some positive action. Thank you.
Yes, follow-up. Councilor Tinsley?
Sorry, just a quick follow-up, because I just wanted to, for those who don't know, because actually you, Town Council President, brought this up at the time, that when we added the public roads to it, I voted no. But as you mentioned, that money gets paid back. So that money went back into the fund, so that, there's a big difference right there between those two examples, even though I still voted no because of, I've stated those reasons, but that is one major difference.
I think everybody's had a chance to speak once. Councilor Dagewan, have you spoken?
I have, but so did Councilor Tinsley, so I'd like an opportunity to-
Sure. I would like to speak at some point, too, folks. Go ahead, please.
To address the issue, again, I think we are, you know, kicking this can down the road one more time. We have an opportunity right now. And just listening to the housing committee stating that they looked at a lot of accessible, accessory housing, and that at one time they had 270 accessory units. And now they're down, it's less than, we're losing them. We're down to 125, 150. And that, to me, could be an area that we could maybe focus on if, you know, in terms of the flexibility. We don't have to put a large amount of money aside for this housing initiative, but it would be a start. And again, we would not be kicking it down the road. And I think I've heard so much tonight from so many people that said, and including those that were here for wastewater, again, felt that this should be missed. But it doesn't have to be 50/50. It was a project for wastewater. I think that's, you know, I was a part of the 208 Plan when it first came out. I know Jessica was part of that committee. We represented our town council on the committee, along with Fred Charagotis at the time. And I just feel that we should not let this opportunity go by, and if it's 1%, 2%, that's something that gets us going and gets us started. And I think we ought to listen to our housing committee, who's done a tremendous amount of study, and have come before us tonight to say that, you know, they're struggling for ideas, and they've been as creative as they can. And I would ask that our councilors, again, rethink this, and consider the flexibility that's there, and help us appropriate, I don't care what amount we come to, for housing at this time, along with this project. You get, it's almost like a pilot. You get a chance to look at it and say, okay, how did that work? You know, it can be small, but we get a chance to test it. We get a chance to see it. We let it go, then, you know, we don't learn a lot, and I think we should. I think we did that with the marijuana projects that came through. You know, we weren't happy about it, but we found ways to say, okay, let's try, you know, doing something with research. It was a way to test and see where that market fits here. This is the 21st century. We don't know what's going to happen next year. We've had all kinds of major storms that have come and gone. We got to step out and take a chance. We have some talented people in this town, but we also have some very bright, caring and talented people on this council. And I'm not as talented as many of you, but I'm very compassionate about this. I've lived here 30 years, didn't grow up here, but what I see in my community, I'm concerned. And I don't want to sit around any longer and just, yeah, okay, well, you know, we'll put it here. Let's try something, even if it's at a small scale. And so I ask that my councilors reconsider the vote tonight, and give us a chance to pilot something here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a couple housekeeping measures that I would like to make clear. I mistakenly was following the handout here that says majority vote for both 219, 2009, and 22009. I've been told by our esteemed attorneys that that is a scriptism era, and we will be looking for a two-thirds vote. So that is issue one. Issue two, I would like a motion to go past the hour of 11:00. I have a first and a second to go past the hour of 11:00 to finish our business. In favor, say aye. All opposed? All opposed, and the abstentions. So we have the permission. With the discussion that's on the table, I obviously have my feelings on this issue, too. As everyone knows, I would love to have an opportunity to build some housing. So I've made that clear 100 times. I have the land, I would like to see that happen. So I will not, though, suggest that this is the right way to address housing. What you are looking at is you're looking at trust funds right now that hold a total of $174,000, plus or minus. And in the housing part of the community preservation, there is $1 million, approximately $600,000, sitting there, unable to go to work. We also, in the trust fund, just inked a contract for $2.5 million contribution to the trust fund, which is dedicated to housing, over a 10-year window with the bulk payment on the rear, I will admit. But there is money moving forward for housing. Housing can go forward because there's enough money for some kind of housing. Septic can't go anywhere because there isn't enough money. There just simply isn't enough money for septic and sewer. And if sewer and septic come forward, I can tell you, as a guy who wants to build units, we will be building units. So this runaround, this chase, what's important, what isn't important? The barriers to housing aren't money. The barriers to housing are for, to be, are to be resolved by private and nonprofit institutions. The barriers and the resolve for sewer is only right here at this dais. Nobody's going to resolve sewer but us, simply put. And we can't do it with the amount we got. We can't do it with this little bit more, but every bit gets us closer, and it makes us committed to a plan that we can support and be proud of when we submit it to DEP. That's what we're working for. That's what we all agreed to go for. This came out as a discussion, and I'm grateful. I stopped all talk. I allowed you to step away and try to write up anything that was an amendment. So I'm willing to have all these conversations go. But before we got here and we're talking about this amendment, we were talking all about septic. And I saw a number of people who say they're supporting it speak about not lifting the estuary overlay, which could create money to pay for septic, but now, now money, now housing's got to have its money. We have to lift the barriers and look at the barriers to housing for what they are. We need money for sewers. And sewers are a big barrier for housing. So obviously, I won't be supporting this. Anybody else? Hearing none, I kick it to the clerk for the roll call vote and the two-thirds action.
Councilors? Dagewan?
Yes.
Let's be brave and do it. Flores?
No.
Rob Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
No.
Neary?
A little too vague. No.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
No.
Tinsley?
No.
Wallace?
No.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
No.
Pollen?
No.
It does not pass.
I would ask my Vice President to please read in 219, 2009, which we agreed we would take up after the action on this past measure. Again, for the correction, it will be a two-thirds vote.
This is old business, may be acted upon. It will require a two-thirds majority vote. It's item 2019-2009. It is in order to create a stabilization fund for comprehensive water and wastewater management as written.
I have a first and a second to bring before this council. 2019, 2009 as written. All those in favor who are opening the discussion on this, please signify by saying aye. Thank you very much. Who, if anybody would like to start the conversation? We are looking, as we know, I might ask Council, I should say, Council Mill, you may as well be at some point, but Director of Finance, Millen, to come forward. The issue about creating this stabilization fund is a little lost in our last discussion. It was more about who should be included. But let's, again, revisit why we need to establish the fund. So if I may, I have the Director of Finance, Mark Millen. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors. Mark Millen, Director of Finance. So, you know, we've been working hard to accumulate as many resources as we can to address the two critical issues. What comprehensive water management, comprehensive wastewater management, who the largest capital programs are probably ever going to face. You've heard earlier tonight from Director Santos's presentation that we're looking at taking a 60-year plan and moving up, accelerating it into a 30-year plan, creating the need to identify even more resources for the comprehensive management of water and wastewater. So what we're looking at here is the short-term rental tax portion that would have normally gone to our general fund. We're asking to consider redirecting that money from the general fund to the stabilization fund for those two particular purposes. Again, to create as many resources as we can. We're still, we're still going to need more, but this will help, and then going in the right direction to address those two large capital programs.
Could you also please for us address the limbo we would be in if we do not pass one of these two tonight, or if we do not have a structure for stabilization?
Yep. If we don't pass either one of these, the revenue will automatically revert to our general fund. It'll stay with our general fund until we decide in the future to do something similar to this, if we want to dedicate it for a particular purpose. So it'll become general fund revenue.
Any questions of Director of Finance? Yes. Vice President?
Thank you, Mark. Is there any new projections on what might be coming towards us relative to this so-called Airbnb tax to fund the stabilization fund? Do you have any estimates from DOR?
No estimates have been provided from DOR. The first payments are due next week, August 20th. And so maybe soon after that, when they receive their first payments, we'll get some information from DOR as to what they've collected in the first month of operations, essentially, the month of July, which should be one of the busier months.
Any other questions of Finance Director? Any other discussions we'd like to have? Having none, hearing none, I'd throw it to our clerk for a vote on 2019, 2009.
Is this two-thirds or is this majority? Is this his majority as well?
It's two-thirds. Councilors?
This is a two-thirds vote again.
Flores?
Yes.
Rob Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagewan?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for a very spirited discussion. It was well worth the time and discussion. Councilor Rob Grissette, could I ask you for 2020, 009, please?
Under old business, second reading may be acted upon. Item 2020, 009, appointments to a board or committee or commission, resolved the town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board, committee, or commission. Historical Commission, Jack Kay, Centerville, alternate member to a term expiring 620. Highness Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission, Jack Kay, Centerville, as an alternate member to a term expiring 620. And Infrastructure and Energy Committee, Rob Wilson, Marston's Mills, as a regular member to a term expiring 622.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor of 2020, 009 as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, please record it as unanimous. Councilor Rob Grissette, could you help me again, please, with 2020, 010?
Under old business, second reading may be acted upon. Item 2020, 010, resolution accepting right-of-way easements for Business Lane and Thornton Drive as written.
Thank you very much. I have a first and a second to bring this before the council, and I do have Dan Santos to discuss the value of the easements and the purpose for them.
Hello again. Part of a project funded by a MassWorks grant, the town of Barnstable plans to install sewer infrastructure along Business Lane and Thornton Drive, which are both private roads. Department of Public Works is seeking to install the sewer infrastructure, and as a result, the town has sought easements from the adjacent property owners to allow the sewer infrastructure to be installed within the private roadway. Town intends to start construction this fall, and the project is funded by a MassWorks grant. These easements will be acquired at no cost to the town. Additionally, the construction of the sewer infrastructure is being completely paid for by a MassWorks grant. Thank you.
Any questions of the rationale? Hearing none, I'd move the vote. All those in favor of 2020, 010 as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, please record that as unanimous. Councilor Beeden Bender, please, could I get you for a couple? 2020, 011.
This is old business, scheduled for a public hearing, majority vote, item number 2020-011. This is an appropriation order in the amount of $162,180 of community preservation funds for creation of open space at Barnstable Hollow Field located at Zero Millway, Barnstable, map 299, parcel 039, as written.
I have a first and a second to bring this business before us tonight. Do I have a rationale from our CPC Chairman? How are you?
Thank you, Council President Crocker. I'm well.
Thank you for riding the bench tonight.
Yeah. I'll read this for you. The Department of Public Works is seeking approval from the town council through the town manager for community preservation, open space, and recreation funds in the amount of $162,180 for the rehabilitation of the Barnstable Hollow Field. At their July 15, 2000 meeting, the Community Preservation Committee members present voted unanimously to recommend the Department of Public Works' application to the council through the town manager for appropriation. The current plans are to eliminate the baseball field and transform the underutilized site into a multi-use green space for increased opportunities for a variety of events, functions, and user groups. Work will include removal of deteriorated player benches, perimeter fencing, backstop, flagpole, and guardrails. Improvements include regrading of the site, removal of the old infield, the installation of loam, irrigation system, grass, fencing, wooden-faced guardrails, HP-accessible entrance, picnic tables, and other miscellaneous materials. This project is consistent with the recently completed Barnstable comprehensive field study and will be a pilot project for the initial development of the field restoration program proposed in the study, and will be constructed under the direction of the Department of Public Works. And with us is Dan Santos to give you a little more background.
Actually, I think Lindsey kind of said it all. I think the only thing I want to add is that recently, a number of Barnstable Village residents have expressed an interest in modifying the scope of the project. We plan to reach out to the community to reach consensus on a final plan. The budget, however, will not exceed the requested appropriation. The budget, however, will not exceed the requested appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As additional rationale, I would ask the Vice President to give us feedback from the community discussion that incurred. Since this came forward, we knew there was some issue, and I asked to get to the bottom of it before we brought the vote, so we all would understand what we're voting on and what the standard is in the community at the time we vote.
Right, this was a discussion at our most recent leadership meeting. I've had talks with Town Manager Mark Els, I've had discussions with DPW Director Dan Santos, discussions with CPC Chairperson Lindsey Council, this evening with Patty Machado, Director of Recreation. The bottom line is that tonight, when we vote this, one hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, we basically will be encumbering the money, but the final plan, the final design, will come subsequent to that vote. And the reason being is that, as the representative precinct one, I have received numerous phone calls as well as one-on-one conversations with a host of different folks, including some who were in the audience the evening, and I thank you for, I think when I met with you all, I said probably this would happen around nine o'clock tonight. I didn't think it would go quite this late, so I appreciate you hanging in there. I also met with the committee representing the Unitarian Church, which borders the hollow. So with all of that being said, I want to assure all of you who are here for this particular agenda item, that all we're doing this evening is appropriating the money, encumbering the money, and that the final plan will be based on additional citizenry input to come at a little bit later point.
Questions of the council? Yes, Counselor Wallace.
Was the space at the hollow just too small for adult league softball field? Regulation of adult league softball field?
Yes, it's way too small, it's even too small for any of the youth leagues now, with the addition of the playground.
Right, thanks.
Counselors, any other questions? Yes, Counselor Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too have had some phone calls regarding that particular spot, and frankly, it was more in the direction of why are we spending the money on that spot? I'm not entirely familiar with it, but maybe you could share with what brought it up? Is it directly tied to the fields program, or what group entity presented it? I guess it'd be a better way to stage the question.
Yes, that's precisely what it was. It was a small rectangular space that was underutilized and basically very deteriorated. The backstops are damaged, and so the thought was to give the fields crew, the new fields crew, a chance to try something out, it was fairly simple, and work in a flat surface that didn't need a lot of drainage like we got into at Lombard and these things, and just really work the plan and begin to move forward with the in-house restoration of the fields at a considerable savings. So that's really the genesis of it. When Rob Steen was here and described that plan to you, this project was moved up from what was it, thirty years in the future, to this, simply really to try this new renovation technique.
Thank you. We're kind of sliding a little bit from the rationale, and we are in a public hearing process, so we'll have a chance to go back to some of these questions. But in the public hearing process, since we do have a number of people, I would ask if anybody wants to be heard on this issue, please come forward. Please sign in and make your name known to us.
I would if there was a pen here.
My name is Stephen Thomas, I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Barnstable. That's a property of butter, of the hollow field. We're in favor of the project, just we were not notified of it until somebody saw it in the newspaper or something, and as a budding property owner. And then we saw the plan, and the plan showed a staircase coming up to our parking lot. And I think...
Lindsey?
It's a stairway to heaven.
Lindsey, has the staircase up to the parking lot been eliminated?
Nothing has been eliminated, yet.
Okay. So there's still a parking lot, I mean, there's still a staircase planned to go to our parking lot, which we were not informed of, asked about, and we use our parking lot pretty heavily. In the past, there has probably been a couple cars that have parked there, and we went, when we met with Vice President Flores and had a very nice meeting, there were about six of us from the church. And we went out to the northwest corner of the parking lot where there's quite a gully where people go down from the church parking lot to the field. Very dangerous, actually. And so we would propose that the staircase be removed, because if the staircase is put up, we're going to put a gate up, we're going to put a fence up. So the staircase would be of no use, and that's four thousand dollars in the budget. That could be used elsewhere, and maybe it could be used on the fence at the top. We just don't want to, you know, we hope the field gets used more, and that the money gets used, so the field gets used more, and it's worth upgrading because it needs it. Another thing is, we didn't see, I didn't see anything as far as trash, or, and I hate to say it, a porta potty. If there's going to be, you know, it's a public space, and I don't know where they would go in the possible town to go to the bathroom, dump the trash. As it is now, we have a problem in that corner of the parking lot with nips, people drinking with nips, which is a huge problem. Another issue was, and I don't know how it got past the Old King's Highway in the CPC, was there's a green chain-link fence that they're going to fence that in. That doesn't quite meet historic methods in my way of thinking. So that needs to be rethought, the green chain-link fence. Thank you.
Please come forward. Thank you for staying with us tonight. Hope you found us entertaining.
My name is Janet Abbott, I'm a Barnstable Village resident, I live on Powder Hill Road within earshot of the hollow. I'm also the Chair of the Governing Board of the Unitarian Church. But I'm not speaking officially for the church, because the church is governed by the congregation, the congregation hasn't voted on anything, I'm only telling you what I've learned in conversation with various members of the congregation. I think the congregation is delighted that the hollow will be proposed for upgrades. We think the roadway between the Cobbs Hill Cemetery and the Mosswood Cemetery really does need attention, it's collapsing, and the replacement of the guardrail would be very welcome. I think handicapped accessible entrance is also a fine idea. But we're concerned about the impact on our parking lot and traffic through the roadway that goes in front of the church, so we would just like to request that there be good communication between the town department that's responsible for scheduling the use of the hollow and the church. The church has a website, and we have a church calendar on the website, so you can easily see what we're planning, but we can't see what you're planning. And there could be, if the hollow is used more heavily, there could be conflicts, because you wouldn't know when we're planning a memorial service, you wouldn't know if we're planning to have work done in the parking lot, you know? We just need good communication so we don't interfere with each other's operations. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bob Frazee, formerly of Marston's Mills, as of last November, a returnee to Barnstable Village. I'm a near neighbor of the hollow, I live on Hyannis Road. We purchased the home of former Dr. Forrest Beam, which is just four doors up from the intersection of Hyannis Road and six A. We take our grandchildren to the hollow. We did this for the first time shortly before the Fourth of July, and it was really one of the first times I'd been there in about thirty years. We used to run a B and B in Barnstable Village, and we raised our kids there, and we used to take them to the hollow regularly. We used to rejoice in the Fourth of July celebrations there, and candidly, we're very disappointed to see in what sad shape it had fallen. All of its infrastructure, with the exception of the little playground, which is much newer than the rest of it, looked like it really hadn't been touched in years. The flagpole, if you raised a flag, you couldn't see it for the trees. The baseball area was clearly decrepit, the field itself was hard-panned with weeds. It was, it's not in good shape. I don't personally believe that if it were restored to a usable condition, which I feel it really isn't in now, that it would increase the usership beyond what it used to be when we lived there thirty years ago. And I think it's important for people to realize there's a village tradition of using the hollow as a recreation space, it's really, really important to the people who live in Barnstable. And it's not so much about making it a wide-open space, we're not going to put a sign up out on one thirty-two saying, please come and join us at the hollow, it's nothing like that at all, we're just trying to reclaim it as a usable space, and I appreciate the hard work that the town, DPW, and CPC, and Counselor Flores and others have put in on trying to make this a better understood process, and definitely I support it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name's Gordon Starr, I live in Precinct One. About a week ago, I organized a meeting of local residents in Barnstable Village to talk about the hollow, because people had not...
You need to speak in the light, please, Gordon.
People in the village had not seen the plan, and I knew it was coming up in front of you guys tonight. So we met, I invited Mark Marinaccio, because I really wanted Chris, but Chris is on vacation, which he's allowed to have a vacation. So Mark came, we had about thirty people at Sturgis Library. Mark presented the plan, it was the first time a lot of them had seen it. It was a very lively meeting, and a lot of people have different emotional connections to the hollow. People, there's sort of an underlying, I would say, sort of tension about the streetscape. We're about to have a three, four million dollar change in the middle of Barnstable Village in about two weeks, in three weeks they're going to start digging it up, and I think that's sort of, people are a little frustrated that they really can't, they can't see what's going to happen there. So the hollow was, I just wanted people to know what was happening, what the process, you know, what the plan was going to look like. I've learned a little bit about the process. So basically, the people were, as a consensus, I would say, people were for the project, they supported completely, but they just want to have a voice in what happens. So we need somebody, you know, just so that we get some give and take. I think too many times, things get, things happen in the village, and people, you know, look back and say, I wish I'd known more, I wish I was more involved. So this group of people was very involved and excited about it. I want to thank Mark Marinaccio for coming. So that's just, we're all for it, but give us a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Hearing none, then take a motion or a second to close the public hearing portion of the meeting? All those in favor of closing the public hearing portion of twenty twenty oh eleven, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Counselors, any questions would you like to hear from our Chair? Counselor, I should say, Lindsey Council or our DPW Director? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. President, I apologize for speaking out of turn earlier.
No, you were okay, we were just drifting, but I should have pulled it in. Thank you.
Hope I don't do it again. We're looking to appropriate money on a plan that isn't on paper yet, and I'll say that I am absolutely in favor of any type of recreational space that the town residents can enjoy, but I just feel a little, it's a little awkward to, I had a budget on my house, and that went amok, so point being is, maybe there's some urgency that I'm not understanding that this has to come to a vote tonight? Or could a plan be put together with the representatives from the area on what everybody's looking to include in that project, and CPC works it out and presents it with a number and probably vote for it?
Are you making a motion to...
I would make a motion to bring a plan before the council. I know it passed unanimously at CPC, but it sounds like there's maybe a little bit of possible changes to the plan, so I would make a motion that you come back to us with a dollar amount and a plan that the area...
If I may, you should make it to a date certain, then we'll see if we get a second and see if people...
How about September fifth? Does that give you enough time? What's the meeting following, September?
Fourteen, nineteen.
Nineteen?
Fourteen more days, nineteen.
A month, is it a month?
First I'll ask, let's say it's the nineteenth, and let's see if there's a second. Do I have a second to continue this to the nineteenth? Okay, I have a second. Discussion between, first, it should start with our counselor, about why you feel the nineteenth would be appropriate, and then you're welcome to ask anybody to assist you in the discussion.
Well, I'm not trying to put undue burden to try to get a plan together, but obviously there are some residents and constituents in that area that maybe aren't quite thrilled with the original plan, so I just feel that that should be hashed out. It's a month, I know a month's not a long time. It doesn't seem like an overly burdensome project, but it would require getting the residents of the area to kind of get together, and that might take some doing. That would be...
For assistance, I'd ask Lindsey Council Chair to tell us what happens to the funds if the vote is postponed for a month, and is everything copesthetic with your board?
It probably would have to go back to CPC, because of the way the order was written was rather specific, so if that was to change and things were added and removed, we'd have to go back to CPC. So you're probably looking at, you would probably take a month to get to CPC, and you're probably talking a couple of months with the, but there's no urgency on our part. We really want to get this right, so let's not put urgency in, you know, it is a great time for Chris to be out there planting grass, but if we get the right plan, the rest of it will fall in place, I think.
I would defer one moment for rationale from our Vice President, who just recently, I had asked him to go back into the field and talk to the people, so if he could give us some feedback on what's being proposed at this time, then I'll work the table.
Right, well, two issues. One, I have spoken with a number of folks who live in Precinct One, who live actually in the village, as well as those who live in Comacoot, who do use the hollow, and they want us to move forward with the project in terms of the amount of money that has been allotted, there is what's concerned, and I shared with them the same concern, that we did not want to lose the funding to support, if you will, the renovation of the field. At the same time, when I met with folks from the Unitarian Church, they felt the same way, they supported, if you will, the overall project, but wanted some specific changes, i.e. the staircase and other related issues, which I said, subsequent to the voting of the money, we would, I would put together a small committee representing the various folks and move this forward. You know, we've had lots of public meetings on a host of different issues, including streetscape. We've hosted them up at the Harborview Room, we've hosted them locally at the library. And in any kind of a plan, in any kind of a renovation, you're going to have those people who support it overwhelmingly, you're going to have those that support it somewhat, and you're always going to have a small minority that probably don't want to see any change whatsoever. That's the way the world works, I get that. But in this particular case, this has been a project that's been ongoing now for probably two or three years. It was originally brought to me by Paul Vendetti, who was the owner of the Matta Keys Restaurant, indicating that they were playing ball there on a regular basis, and the place was in shambles. And so that's what sort of got it, if you will, into the loop for even consideration, because originally, when we first looked at the field plan, this was thirty years down the road, I probably, I'll be a very old man then, not that I'm not now, but I'm not sure I'll be around to see it come to fruition. sure I'll be around to see it come to fruition. Bottom line is, is that all we're really doing tonight is voting the appropriation. I don't want to see us lose the money because it's going to have to be a whole new cycle that goes before CPC. There's no guarantee that that funding will be approved. I can tell you that from a motion perspective, this will not exceed the $162,180 that's been appropriated by CPC. And towards that end, with Chris and his staff, this is going to be an in-house project. And that was one of the variables that we looked at in terms of allowing this to move forward. It's not going out for bid, it's not going to be done by an outside contractor, it's going to be done with in-house staff as, for a substantial level of savings. So I would hope that the, my fellow members of the Town Council would vote in favor of appropriating the money, subject to final approval when we, I'll have some community meetings between now and the next 30 to 45 days, so that we can come up with a plan. And that's what basically was agreed upon at our leadership meeting, when I spoke with Mark, when I spoke with Lindsey, and I spoke with Dan.
Could I ask the DPW Commissioner, please come forward for a minute and give us some additional rationale? Knowing the circumstances that are out there, how would you let people know that you will gain consensus to put the final bid out, the final plan out for construction by our in-house expertise?
Well, we will work with Counselor Flores, who has made his contacts, and we would participate in any meeting and present the plans as we envision them and get the feedback like we started to last week. And then kind of go back and forth and hopefully reach a consensus on ultimately what the project will be and that the community can support.
So a yes vote postpones this to the 19th, a no vote takes us through the process that we just heard by the DPW Commissioner. Anybody else have a question? Yes, Counselor Wallace.
For Lindsey, did your committee vote unanimously for this recommendation, for this appropriation?
Unanimous of the members present, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody understand the vote that we're being asked to take? Hearing none. I will call on the, first I'll, we had a first and a second on the amendment. So I would ask that we vote the amendment, and the amendment is to move this forward to a date certain of September 19th, I believe. All those in favor of moving this forward to a vote certain of December 19th, please signify by saying aye. I best get a hand, show of hands, please. I have two, three. Any opposed? Obviously, opposed carries the day here. We're back on to the article as written, 2020-011. Any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Tinsley on the end. I have a motion to move the question. Well, we have to vote the motion to move the question. It ceases all debate, so we actually, unless you'd like to withdraw for any reason? No, he doesn't want to withdraw. So did I have a second to the motion to move the question? I have a second. So I have a first and a second to move the question on 2020-011. So all those in favor of moving the question, 2020-011, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Please record the opposition as Counselor Levesque. Now, on the motion, 2020-011. All those in favor of passing 2020-011, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Counselor Snep? Any abstention? Would you like to abstain? Abstain, please record one abstention. Thank you very much. We're on to 2020-12. Counselor Steinhelber, please, could you read in 2020-12?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under New Business, this is item 2020-012. Like to refer to a public hearing on September 5th, 2019. Appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $30,000 for the outboard engine replacement on the Harbor Masters Southside Patrol boat as written.
I have a first and a second to move to a public hearing on 9/5/2012 as written. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstention? Any nays? None? Thank you. Counselor Steinhelber, 2020-13.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under New Business, item 2020-013. Like to refer to a public hearing on September 5th, 2019. Appropriation order in the amount of $136,055. Community preservation funds for historic preservation and restoration of annual town report volume years 1868 to 1994 as written.
I have a first and a second to move to a date certain of 9/5/19, 2020-13 as written. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? And please record on the last two, Counselor Beedenbender has been off the dais. We're referring to the public hearing. We have errors on those today, so please extend. I would ask that we set aside the vote on 2020-011 because we have not fulfilled our obligations to get a roll call vote in a two-thirds measure. So I would ask that, all those in favor of reconsidering 2020-011 for a roll call vote, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Please record that Counselor Beedenbender is off of the dais. Here comes Counselor Beedenbender, so let me update her for one minute. Counselor Beedenbender is with us, and please start the roll call process. And this is the roll call on 2020-011.
Counselors. Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Steve, Steinhelber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Proctor.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagewine.
Abstained.
Flores.
Yes.
It passes. Thank you.
We have two to go. I am on 2020-014, and I would ask Counselor Cullen to assist me, please.
This is item number 2020-014, acceptance of a gift in the amount of $4,902.50 from the Luke Vincent Powers Foundation to the Recreation Division for the purpose of purchasing a Big Belly solar trash container for Luke's Love Playground. This may be acted upon.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a first and a second. It's the, the item is before us, and we're fortunate enough to have Lynn stick it out with us tonight, Lynn Poyant, Director of Community Services.
Good evening, Lynn. Lynn Poyant, Community Services Director. Thank you, Mr. President, counselors. It is the Powers family desire to further continue their original gift, which was given to the town in 2009, of Luke's Love Playground by adding educational components for children and families who visit, as well as keeping the area looking as clean as possible. In addition, they hope that by having a Big Belly trash compactor there, that Luke's Love will, it will make the trash removal easier for the town.
Any questions of the rationale? Yes, Counselor Rap Grissette, who knows these items that are before us.
Okay, well, you know, trash is a big thing. And I know it's getting late and I'm getting a little giddy, but be careful with these Big Bellies because they invite people to put trash where you don't want it. The town has been very effective in doing the pack-in, pack-out. And where there were Big Bellies, there was trash that when the Big Belly was full, people would put all around the outside of the Big Belly and it invited rats and it was a mess. So, you know, I think it's great that the family wants to contribute to the area, but I think they're problematic, I really do. And especially in a remote area like this where, you know, it's not visible, I think you're going to be inviting people to put household trash there, so.
Currently, there are trash containers at both the Lombard Field as well as the playground. And the thought is by having a Big Belly, it's going to contain the trash as opposed to having it outside.
I hope you're successful, but you might find that you'll want to just take it away because they're problematic, they're invited nuisance, I think, so.
Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Beedenbender?
I would support Counselor Rap Grissette's comments in that we recently implemented, piloted, a pack-in, pack-out project over, in the Centerville area, over Craigville Beach, down where the Long Beach Conservation Area begins. And originally, there were two big barrels there. And they were always filled and overflowing, and there was everything from trash, beach trash, to household trash, to busted coolers, busted chairs, stupid blow-up things, you know, it was just a mess. And we talked, we went back and forth. I talked with Town Manager Els, I talked with Chris Gonella of Structures and Grounds, I talked to Counselor Rap Grissette about it, and weighed the pros and cons of these Big Bellies. And we ultimately decided that that was probably not going to solve our trash problem the way that we hoped because you have a receptacle, people just see it as like the target for dumping everything. So we've, we've piloted pack-in, pack-out, there are no barrels there, and there is almost never any trash, knock on wood. But, but we have been monitoring it and we've had really great success and haven't had to expend, you know, 4,000 plus for a Big Belly. So just, just adding my two cents to Counsel.
Anyone else address this?
Who's question?
I have a first and a second. All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we're moving the question right along to 2020-014. All those in favor of the article as written, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? One, two, please record the two oppositions. And no oppositions, no abstentions, and we're off to the races.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask Counselor Wallace to read in 2020-015, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is New Business, referring to a public hearing on September 5th, 2019. It's item number 2020-015. Appropriation order of $242,822 for the rehabilitation and restoration work to the Payne Black House, 2135 Meeting House Way, West Barnstable, Massachusetts.
Thank you very much. I have a first and a second to revert 2020-015 to a public hearing on 9/5/19. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. Anybody got any last minute flies? Or I would look for a motion to adjourn. I have a first and a second to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition, abstentions? Thank you. Good night. Good job.